Hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of April 27, 2023 to order. Today, we have Savannah Scoff, who's an eight-year-old and a third grader at Catherine Finchy Elementary. She loves singing, dancing, swimming, and art, and she will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Savannah. Really appreciate it. And we love having our kids come in and help out. City Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember DeHart?
Here.
Councilmember Hostage?
Here.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Bernstein?
Here.
Mayor Gardner?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you so much. I just want to pass it over to our City Manager, Scott Stiles, for a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Gardner, and members of the City Council. I just wanted to introduce you to Roman Ruiz, our new homeless outreach coordinator, and I wonder if Mr. Ruiz could come up to the podium. Let me just mention to you that Mr. Ruiz came to us from the city of Banning, where he served as the homeless site coordinator there. His responsibilities there included oversight of all their shelter facilities, conducted client intake and occupancy of their facility, worked with residents on site rules and expectations, collaborated with the police department, other city departments, community partners, documenting client activity, all of that important work. He's done other nonprofit work with Upward Bound House to assist individuals dealing with mental health, substance abuse, co-occurring disorders, domestic violence, and medical needs. He's been a caseworker for Affordable Housing Developer, New Economics for Women. Mr. Ruiz has his master's degree in social work from the University of Southern California, and he received his undergraduate degree in theater from the California Institute of Arts. And so, we're thrilled to have him on board, and I thought he might just say a quick word or two to the council.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, all council members, for letting me come in through here and say hello. Introduce myself. My name is Roman Reese. I am very happy to be here and very anxious to get working on this very important issue for the city. So, thank you again.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
This is a position we've been waiting for, for a long time. All right. At this time, we do have a presentation regarding our traffic signal synchronization project update. I believe we have Tom Kirk here, as well as Chris Gunterson and Joel Montalvo. So whoever wants to start, you choose.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The Engineering Department does get frequent calls about our traffic signals, and you know they're having problems or something's not working. So, I thought the best way to show where we are and where we're going is to bring in Seevag and try to discuss the CV Sync project, which really is going to improve the traffic signals here in the city of Palm Springs and regionally. So with that, I'll introduce Tom Kirk, and I'll have some few words at the end. Okay? Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, good to see all of you. I'll make this very quick. Signal synchronization doesn't sound like a very interesting thing, but it is. And it'll help us get from one point in our valley to another point in our valley faster and easier, and make it better for our visitors, too. I'm going to give you a broad overview. Congestion relief is a big deal. We understand this time of year in particular, with music festivals and a lot of other events going on in the Coachella Valley, our residents and visitors do face a little bit of congestion, particularly before and after these big weekends. CV Sync, are you going to see green lights everywhere? No, but you're going to see more green lights than red in the future. And we've tried this before, by the way, in the Coachella Valley, and we failed. We tried this about 21 years ago on Highway 111, and the system just didn't work. And I kind of liken it to, remember the days of Microsoft Word and WordPerfect? And if you did a document in one of those, and you tried to convert it to the other, it'd always be screwed up. We've been doing that with our signal synchronization program in the Coachella Valley. Every city had its own program, software, controller, and it didn't communicate with other cities. So, we're looking at a system that works for the many, not just the one. And I could tell you stories about just one person can screw up the entire system by insisting they shouldn't wait 30 seconds to make a left turn on Highway 111. We're going to get away from that and create a regional system with your cooperation. Eight cities in the county and Caltrans are participating. It's 120 corridors, 530 signals, and we're installing new controllers at every one of those control boxes that sit on one of the four corners of your signals. What's included: dynamic message signs, optics, fiber optics, cable TV, video detection, and a traffic operations center. Every city has their own traffic operations center. It could be as simple as a laptop. In the case of Seevags, it's a regional traffic operations center. We are done with Phase One, and our former chair, Hostage, I think we're there when we were about midway through Phase One, that involved Washington Street, Highway 111, and Ramon. We're just about 30 days away from accepting the final work on Highway 111. We're largely done with Washington and Ramon. Phase Two is a $100 million project that Mayor Gardner, you're part of our executive committee. We just approved that work, and that'll take the next two years. And I'll show you what that means for the city of Palm Springs in a minute. So, Phase One, largely done. We're finishing up the work with Caltrans to deliver Gene Autry and then Ramon, then back out to Highway 111. That should be done in the next 30 days. Phase Two, expect summer, by summer of 2020, for all the other major corridors through the city of Palm Springs to be synchronized. And we're here to tell you, this is going to be slightly disruptive at times to your community. And that's one reason we're here, to explain that. But most of the work is actually underground. You're not going to see open trenches in the arterials. We do work on the control boxes and the masked arms, but we're going to try to do that at night and in the middle of the summer. And Eric Howes, our point of contact, and really the lead on the project for the last few years, he's meeting with Main Street merchants on June 6, right, Eric? And will continue to have a direct relationship with your community and work through city staff, Amy, Joel, and the rest of your team. So, our traffic management centers. Chris, that was kind of the, oh, there are going to be impacts we're building. I'd like to share with you the great things that CV Link is already, sorry, CV Sync is already doing in the Coachella Valley, and Chris is going to share a little bit of that with you.
Good afternoon. Chris Gunterson, CV Sync Program Manager. And what we're looking at here is the traffic management center over in La Quinta, and it was utilized during the Ironman back in December. And what it allowed us to do during the Ironman is to respond in real time to traffic conditions. We had deputies posted in there with us, so they could contact the deputies out in the field. We had other people there helping us adjust the timing, following cameras. And at one point, we were able to even help a couple of citizens get around the event with real-time traffic conditions. This is the Regional Traffic Management Center over in Palm Desert, and we were monitoring the tennis tournament for Indian Wells in La Quinta and Palm Desert. And during the event, we were able to monitor the event in real time as well and do real-time signal adjustments during that, and also have real-time communication with staff out in the field to make adjustments to the traffic control. Here's a short video of drone footage. You can see the impact of the traffic as it's rolling in. It looks like a bunch of ants. And the tennis stadium's off over there on the upper right-hand side. But basically, being able to have eyes in the sky everywhere helps us to adapt quickly to changing traffic conditions. And if there's something that causes any issues in the field, helps us to respond quickly. And we would plan on using the facilities to respond to many of the events throughout the valley. There's a lot of events here in Palm Springs. There's also plenty of events mid-valley and in the east valley. And so, we want to really utilize that to help traffic flow, not just on a daily basis, respond to all the special events that we enjoy here in the valley. And with that, I'm going to hand it back to Tom, and he'll finish this up.
Yeah, planning ahead for the special events is a big opportunity for us with this system. But we're also, having this tool in our toolbox allows us to respond to the unexpected events like flooding, which is certainly a huge issue in our valley periodically. With this system in place, we're able to use our changeable message signs, several of which are now operating, one of which the city has just installed, actually on Gene Autry, may be operational today, tomorrow, or certainly in the next 30 days. And a few others are already operational as well. So we'll use these and the system to shape the traffic flows in the Coachella Valley. With that, I think this is Joel, the end of Joel, sorry about that. And thank you very much.
So yeah, thank you, Tom. So one of the things that I wanted to show is, the city of Palm Springs also has a traffic management center. We have our own. It's been upgraded with the CV Sync. And what I wanted to show on this slide here is our network right now is in different stages of their functionality. Some signals are very old. Some of the communications are very old. They're failing. So we're working to fix that, and our audience or our residents want to know, what are you doing today to fix this situation, right? We're going to integrate into the CV Sync, but right now, we're spending about $15 million in active projects. The downtown project is one of them. We have three, four actually highway safety improvement programs that are being funded by Caltrans. We have two signals that are going up, one at Rosa Parks in Indian, the other at San Rafael and Avenida Caballeros. We have the pedestrian signal at Racket Club. And in the next few weeks, or next few council meetings, I'll be bringing back a request for funding to continue working with our traffic management center to improve it and connect it to the CV Sync. So that's sort of what we are doing to improve our traffic signals here in the city of Palm Springs. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that update from all of you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is acceptance of the agenda. The City Council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order at urgency items, note abstentions, or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items to be removed for separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items staff or council members would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion or vote? Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. Excuse me. On Item 1, I'd like to make just a very quick statement. And then on Item 1T, as in Tom, I need to recuse myself as I'm a member of Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to pull Item 1I.
Okay, thank you. Any other? No. Okay, great. Fantastic.
Thank you. I'm also recusing, noting for the record that I am recusing on Item 1T for the Boys and Girls Club as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda? With, I'm sorry, with 1I pulled and recusals noted for 1T? Thank you. So we have a first and a second. Are we using our new system for voting?
We can, if you're ready.
Yes, please. So you can, you should be able to... Oh, it's not working. Can we have a motion?
Hold on one second. One second. Give me a second.
Apologies, folks. We're trying to try our system out.
Acceptance of the agenda, set item. Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
Let's try.
Maybe not.
Okay.
Okay, fantastic. All right. So let's see if we can do that for the rest of the meeting. Thank you all for your patience. All right. At this time, I invite City Attorney Jeff Ballinger to provide a report on the closed session.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council and members of the public. The City Council met in closed session earlier to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you very much. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on non-public hearing. I agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. With that said, we're going to begin with Jeffrey Cohen, and Jeffrey Cohen is here on behalf of the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and the city has provided a proclamation for World Wish Day. So please go ahead, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. Good. On behalf of the Orange County Inland Empire Chapter of Make-A-Wish, I'd like to thank the Palm Springs City Council very much for the World Wish Day proclamation. I'd just like to give you the bullet points. Make-A-Wish is celebrating, our Make-A-Wish chapter is celebrating our 40th anniversary, fulfilling our mission of creating life-changing wishes for children with critical illnesses in Orange, Riverside, and Seren Bernardino counties. Make-A-Wish fulfills all kinds of wishes, from wishes to be, they want to be somebody, to have a computer system perhaps, to go Disney World, Disneyland, and to wishes to meet celebrities typically. This idea is to give children the strength to fight against and even overcome a critical illness. Research has shown that the wish journey can improve the emotional well-being of a child with a life-threatening illness. Our chapter grants 325 wishes each year. I'm sure you won't be surprised to learn that 40% of them are Disneyland, Disney World, and again, 45% are travel. Again, my sincere thanks for the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, our first speaker is Catherine Hatch, followed by Jean-Pierre Galaly.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
My name is Catherine Hatch. I'd like to comment on Item 1I. I'm a regular user of Palm Springs Parks with my three sons, ages 2, 4, and 9, and I've been increasingly baffled by their condition, and I'm not alone. This is a wealthy town. We pay high property taxes to live here. People come here from all over the world. The way in which the city maintains its public parks is an embarrassment. I'm happy the shade. However, the council should also consider adding water features. We used to enjoy one at Ruth Hardy, but it was removed years ago. This is the desert. We need shade and water for children to be able to play in the heat. There's only one shade-to-play structure in Palm Springs, which is Sunrise Park. I encourage you to visit Sunrise. It's dilapidated, the ground is peeling, not all the swings work, and many parents avoid it due to open drug use in around the park. The maintenance of our park bathrooms and structures need immediate attention. For months, two slides at both Ruth Hardy and Demuth have been boarded off. Why is this? Who's responsible for maintaining the existing play structures, and why does it take months to repair them? And why aren't they cleaned? The bathrooms at all of our city parks are filthy. It's well-known among parents to avoid them. My older son plays baseball with the Palm Springs Youth League. He and the other children can't use the bathrooms without a parent in there with them. As I was photographing the conditions at Demuth, a desperate mother said to me, "Please complain. This is horrible." The league president has told us about encountering drugs, people selling and using them, and sexual acts taking place in the bathrooms by the fields. How can the city allow this? What does it say to the families that live here? I encourage you to visit the local playgrounds, use the bathrooms, and imagine you were there with your children or the child of someone you love. I encourage you to visit the playgrounds in Rancho, Palm Desert, Cat City, and even Indio to see how clean, modern, and welcoming and well-maintained they are by comparison. We should be able to do better for our youngest residents, and as the most recognized city in this valley, these conditions are unacceptable. At a bare minimum, we should be able to keep our parks and restrooms safe and clean. Hopefully, you will be the changemakers Palm Springs Parks desperately needs. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jean-Pierre Galaly, followed by Tamika Griselle.
And city functionaries, the city police chief Mills. Good afternoon to everyone, and thank you for allowing me to speak here. I'm a taxpayer because my wife and I will live in the city. We own a home near the Section 14 area. And we find it completely absurd that the city is going to incur an expense of over $500,000. And if, and they're hiring or considering to hire an organization from New York State. And New York State is a disaster itself. It's a lot of criminality. There's nothing to learn from New York. People are being pushed into the subway, and terrible things are happening in New York. And there's no reason to hire a firm from New York if we were going to do this, hire one from California. But the whole idea is absurd, and I think it's going to be a blunder because I understand that this property was owned by the Indians, the Kewila Indians, and that whatever happened on that property, on Section 14, those many years ago, that was between the Indians allowed it, not the city of Palm Springs. The city of Palm Springs may have improved because these were shacks. It was a shanty town. I have lived in South America, and I have seen the extent of shanty towns and slums. And if they are not cleaned up, they turn into huge cities. It's a very difficult thing. These people were pushed out of their property to clean up the city, to improve, because they had no infrastructure, and something had to be done, and it's a difficult thing, and no laws were broken. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tamika Griselle, followed by Amanda Crim.
Hi, my name is Tamika Griselle, and I am representing Section 14 from Palm Springs, California. And I did hear the gentleman just speak about how the city didn't have anything to do with it. I hate to say, but there are plenty of articles and information on Section 14 in regards to the city's involvement. There's so much we could say about the situation, and I know that gentleman spoke about it, but his grandmother didn't live on that property. His grandmother didn't move from a Jim Crow state of Mississippi to live in Palm Springs and work. My grandmother was a wonderful person, and my family still owns our house. In 2023, that was purchased in 1962 on Lawrence Crosley's property after being sent off of that property the way she was. And it's one thing to say that it was shacks and you needed to get rid of that property. Okay, that may have been true. It may have been true. But it's how you do things. It's a way to do everything. And you can't just burn down folks' homes and think it's okay. It's not okay. People moved out there. People had their entire livelihood out there in that area. They had churches. They had homes. They had stores. And they were taken care of. A lot of people, my grandmother, used to clean people's homes here in the desert until the day she died. So these same nasty people that they talk about have made Palm Springs what it is today. Okay, I still live here. I'm a nurse. I'm 45 years old. I have no felons. I'm a taxpayer, and we have rights, too. And I don't understand why everybody has a problem when Black and Latinos speak up about what they need. You know, everyone can get reparations. If I'm not mistaken, even the Japanese...
Thank you so much for your comments. Amanda Crim, followed by Gloria Thompson.
Amanda is not available.
Gloria Thompson, followed by Naomi Soto. Gloria, are you there?
Yes, I'm here now. Thank you.
Please go ahead.
I'd like to piggyback off of my friend Tamika Griselle just spoke. I'm also a survivor, born and raised on the reservation. And Amanda just spoke, probably haven't even been in California, not California, but Palm Springs very long. Most of the people talking negative about what happened didn't even live there at one time. And the reason why the reservation was in the condition that it was in is because we were paying taxes, but our tax money wasn't being put into our neighborhood like it is today. Most of everything that comes out of Palm Springs at City Council and everything else, you know, get put everywhere else but in our neighborhood. We had to fight for sidewalks and sewers and all kinds of things. We've been fighting ever since we were put off, and when we were put off. Even our trash wasn't picked up. So if trash was sitting around, it wasn't us. It was the city that was not giving us what we were paying taxes for to have. Okay? So a lot of these people that are speaking negatively about us wasn't even from Palm Springs at the time. They have no idea what went on. And I'm sick of them standing up and talking about something they know nothing about. But anyway, I have a lot to say, but two minutes can't give me enough time. And I'm real disappointed. And the Palm Springs City Council had every right to apologize. They should have a long time ago, but at least it came, and I appreciate that. We all do. So now we can heal and move forward with this. That's what we want to do. And keep all the negative energy out of... And keep all the negative energy out of
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Thompson. The next speaker is Naomi Soto, followed by Jovita Ayala.
Hi, City Council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. I am here talking on item 1I. I am so pleased, so thrilled that we're gonna have shade, full shade at two parks, at Victoria Park and Demuth. I would just like to underscore that it's so important that we kind of standardize comprehensive shade at all of our parks, and that we forecast the maintenance and replaces, replacement costs of all shade structures, so we keep children safe from the strong sun here, and also that we're anticipating what that cost is gonna be, and it's not sneaking up on us, and we're letting it kind of extend far longer than it needs to. I did notice in both proposals for both parks, there is no water features. This fact that, despite the fact that there is the infrastructure for water play, I think it was about a year or two ago, maybe last 18 months, the old water turtles were taken out from all of our parks. But I haven't seen any proposals on how, if, or when they will be replaced. And water play is really important. I hear a lot of times people say the pool, the pool is for, best for swimmers and safest for swimmers, for very small children, preschoolers, toddlers, splash pads are really helpful. And then the last thing I would say around parks is, you know, I would love to hear an update on the status of new park rangers. I believe they just started. I don't know why it took 10 months to fill. There was supposed to be new maintenance employees that were funded last June by council as well. I haven't heard if they've been funded. We have heard comments about the status of our parks. And the Parks Master Plan, I haven't heard anything recently. And, you know, last June, council stressed that maintenance and repairs cannot be delayed for the sake of the big Parks Master Plan, and that we should really prioritize this at the same time. So I'd love to see some of those things considered and remembered as you move forward with these two park projects. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you. Jovita Ayala, followed by Jenny Fote. Jovita Ayala? All right, we'll move on to Jenny Fote. Jenny, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm speaking on 3A. As a 14-year member of the city council, I fought to have the Bogart statue removed from in front of City Hall because of his involvement with Section 14. I'm grateful that the previous city council successfully removed it, as it was a painful reminder of that time. Coming from that place, I'm urging you, however, to reject the contract with Columbia University and its subcontractors and go back out to bid with a new RFP. I'm very concerned that a lot of assumptions were made in both the circulated RFP and in the staff report, and also don't understand why the proposal was not made public. As a community, we're anticipating the hiring of an independent arbiter, a historian or a university who would research and gather without bias all the facts surrounding Section 14. There are many conflicting stories about what happened, who ordered it, and what was told of the families. All of us in this community want to know exactly what happened. We, the city, have both an obligation to the descendants and of the families and to the citizens of the city. This council has the responsibility to gather all the facts and determine what is fair and just as well as a fiduciary responsibility to the residents of Palm Springs. You've yet to define the scope and the city's factual involvement in what happened and what that means. I've read all the documents that have been covered in the archives and other information that has come from local historians. I'm also sure the descendants have additional information. We cannot act on what we think happened or the conflicting memories of individuals as to what happened. We definitely cannot pay half a million dollars for a predetermined outcome. An independent analysis of all the facts needs to be presented to the council so that a determination can be made on how to proceed. Everyone in this city has a stake in this, and therefore, you as a council have an obligation to get it right. I implore you to reject the contract and hire an independent researcher or firm, and then from their report, make your determination on how to proceed. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is William Wickwire, followed by Ben Mayfield. William?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, I'm William Wickwire, the movie Colony District 3, calling, uh, calling in about item 3A reparations. I have five points to make. The first one is about the bias that's inherent in this proposal. We should not spend over 500 or up to 502,000 on research on Section 14 with a team that is already pre-biased. I mean, just check out their websites. Columbia University is an unbiased sounding cover, but this is a preordained agenda. The item, the team is not objective. They're not a third party who will openly consider all the inputs, and they are starting with an unbendable hypothesis, and they're going to gather data to prove it. Number two, slippery slope. There should be citizen polling on a matter of this magnitude, because it doesn't just end at half a million dollars. Newly found documents show that the Bureau of Indian Affairs, Riverside County, and other people wanted to honor the tribe's right to develop their own land is a stone-cold fact, and it is written into current land leases that you are subject to eviction and home loss if tribal members seek to reclaim their parcels of land. Furthermore, the RFP was likely to have been inaccurate. Three, inflated values. People lost homes, and the value of those homes must be considered, because to claim that vast amounts of intergenerational wealth were lost is wrong. They were seasonal workers living on undeveloped land, and although $2 billion is just an anchor number, considering there are only 120 documented survivors, after losing a structure on land they did not own, they would now be worth $17 million each. One of your speakers talked about how she does have intergenerational wealth because of leaving Section 14 for the Crosley tract. And they need to investigate exactly how much taxes were paid and exactly for what, if they're going to use that as a reason that the city should have provided more service. On the, number four, relative emotional trauma. The tribe was disadvantaged and also needed assistance at the
Thank you. The next speaker is, pardon me, Ben Mayfield, followed by Darrell Terrell. Ben Mayfield?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Ben Mayfield. I'm for item 3A. I'm a Section 14 survivor. It, it's really amazing, it did happen, you know, the Holocaust there in Palm Springs. But it's amazing that when it comes to specifically Black people, but also Brown, that we don't hurt, that we don't feel pain. What happened to us is no big deal. Just a, just a small research, I look at England atrocities to Scotland. I look at Japan atrocity to China. Thirteen, 3.9 million Chinese were killed. I'm looking at TERPS, the Armenian genocide. You know, 100 to 200,000 women and children were converted to become Muslims. I mean, it just took away the world. Now also looking at Nazi Germany against the Jews. 6 million Jews approximately were killed. And Jews are still hunting Nazis. In December of '22, her name is Urban Guard Furchner. She was indicted and prosecuted for 10,500 murders, although she had a suspended sentence, but Jews are still hunting Nazis because they haven't forgotten. And so we won't forget, and so we will continue our journey. I want to thank the city of Palm Springs for acknowledging what has happened to us and continue the great fight. Thank you.
Darrell Terrell, followed by Val Crody.
Hi, my name is Darrell Terrell. For far too long, there's been an imbalance of power between third-party food delivery services and restaurants. They shouldn't be pressured into accepting third-party food delivery services fees in order to remain viable and competitive. Madam Mayor and your colleagues, the city council, I have seen your commitment, support and leadership in protecting your, your restaurants, and this work is before the pandemic, during and after. You have opportunity once again to stand up for them. That's why I support the permanent ordinance by permitting, limiting the fees. You are ensuring that the restaurants have a real opportunity to recover and thrive, and delivery drivers receive all their tips they earn and deserve. However, Madam Mayor and City Council, we could do even more. For example, you should propose an ordinance that requires these third-party delivery services to obtain a city business license and pay their fair share of taxes. By licensing food delivery apps, you could bring much-needed oversight and regulation to this expanding industry, which would greatly benefit not only the delivery drivers, but the restaurants and residents who use apps as well. Also, you should consider requiring them to share customer order data with restaurants fulfilling food orders. Prohibit them from listing restaurants on their platform without the restaurant's permission. Require them to list a restaurant's brick-and-mortar telephone number on their platform. And finally, prohibit them from charging restaurants for telephone orders when a transaction did not take place. These ideas will protect our restaurants from unfair practices and threaten their existence when they're the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Val Crody, followed by Michael Joseph Pitkin.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Val Crody, and I've reviewed the recommendations today on the 2A agenda item. I'm in favor of altering the first-come-first-served prioritizing to make it available first to people who would really benefit most, in order of seniors and disabled, and in the order of extremely low income, which is for a single applicant, $18,500 a year, then very low-income applicants, which is an annual income for a single person of $30,800, and finally, the low-income applicants whose annual income is $49,500 for a single person. This way, those with no resources are prioritized over those with the higher incomes of up to $49,500. For people like me in mobile home parks in the extremely low-income bracket of no more than $18,500, my personal income is significantly less than that. It's a hopeless, one step from homelessness situation when major issues arise. I have a lot to say in regard to the difficulty getting assistance in keeping my mobile home habitable. It was not disclosed to me prior to the purchase that it had sat empty and a pipe broke flooding the home for an extended period of time with up to three inches of water, which I discovered by a barely visible water line. Much later, it was confirmed by a neighbor. Over time, the wooden supporting frame underneath dry-rotted, causing my home to begin caving in. I see daylight where the wall and floor meet in one room so far. I've tried every avenue over the past five years, multiple times, from Congressman Raoul Ruiz's office to Habitat to Humanity, to you name it, down to all the local charities with never any help in sight. Myself and people like me in the lowest-income bracket with no hope and no other options would greatly benefit from this program. My next upcoming step would be homelessness, and I'm sure that I'm not alone. I've tried over three years to secure low-income housing in case I must abandon my home that otherwise serves me very well. My experience with the two-year wait period after applying has been, well, I'm still two years out after waiting three years.
Mr. Crody, your time is expired.
Mostly the waiting lists are closing, definitely. I'll have nowhere to go and ultimately my home
Mr. Crody?
The lowest-income residents of Palm Springs would greatly benefit the greatest if they could only be considered first. It would be a real lifesaver.
Thank you. And I do realize that that comment came in the wrong spot, so if anyone else is speaking on 2A, that will be at a later time, but you're fine. Your comment is fine.
Oh.
It was, we, that was my fault. But thank you for your comment. Just noting that for the record. And next we have Michael Joseph Pitkin, and then followed by Amanda Crim.
Michael Joseph Pitkin, all allocations. In United States, only non-theistic Satanism is promoted, as Jewish and Christian religions do not want God associated with evil. To prevent another Hitler and Holocaust, theistic Satanism is not about creating a god of evil religion. Rather, since time immemorial, there has always been human definition and respectful understanding of all that is naturally not leading to a pleasant human survival. That natural unpleasantness should be acknowledged as part of all aspects of life, including religion. All Satanists, occult, nonbelievers, and the others have a duty to be engaged citizens willing to compromise with all religions for human survival. If one is not part of the solution, then one is part of the problem. In over a year and a half, I have asked several requests of this body and its government partners, those requests I feel I need in order to survive, requests that fix your broken, reasonable test, program, and civil rights violations. My requests have been disregarded. It is against my own theistic Satanism religion to be forced into Jewish and Christian religions and laws. Today, in protest, I, Michael Joseph Pitkin, publicly pronounce I am a theistic Satanist, religious conscientious objector. In addition, I am a political, sex, race, age, financial, and economic disparity conscientious objector. All of the negative actions and threats of treason and sedition from people of color here is exactly what I experienced in 2004 at Barbara Boxer's FBI office in LA with Black women screaming sedition. It is not to be me who is treasonous and seditious, but rather those who put Trayvon Johnson and Deborah Randolph on my medical records without my permission. If this body does not like my pronouncement, then I will go to confession to my friend Father John Butkus, a client of mine I moved to Beaumont in 2005.
Next speaker is Amanda Crim, followed by Doug Evans.
Wonderful. Good evening, council members. My name is Amanda Crim, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify on behalf of DoorDash on item 3C. At DoorDash, our mission is to grow and empower local economies, including in Palm Springs. We do that by connecting customers with the best of their communities, helping local restaurants and other merchants grow their business and provide delivery drivers, our dashers, access to flexible earning opportunities. Thankfully, much has changed since October 2020, when the city first imposed emergency limits on the fees that platforms like DoorDash and restaurants in Palm Springs may agree to. Dining rooms are fully reopened, social distancing and mask requirements have been lifted, and vaccines are widely available. In fact, both the state of California and the city have terminated their respective states of emergency. Now that the city's economy has reopened, restaurants in Palm Springs again have options when it comes to serving their customers, including more choices than ever when it comes to partnering with platforms like DoorDash. For more than two years, DoorDash has offered pricing plans that give local restaurants the ability to offer customers delivery through a marketplace and pay only 15% commission, the same rate required by the city's temporary fee limits. Restaurants that want to pay more to access additional services can opt into those services and pay a higher commission, and restaurants aren't locked into the choices they make. They're free to switch plans as they see fit. Keeping the current, current fee limits in place could jeopardize the ability of restaurants in Palm Springs to access the full suite of services offered by DoorDash and other platforms. Fee limits also cause customers' prices to increase, leading to fewer opportunities for restaurants to earn revenue and for dashers to earn income. For these reasons, we urge the council to follow the lead of other cities like San Francisco that have adopted a compromise approach and ensures restaurants have access to low-cost options, but gives restaurants the flexibility to decide which products and services work best for them. Thank you again for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next is Doug Evans, followed by Randall Sturgis.
Good evening. My name's Doug Evans. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about item 3A. You've got to get the facts right. You heard some very good testimony, some testimony from somebody I usually disagree with, about you better get it right. Your contract is flawed. We're not here to try to fix it for you. You're either to live with it, or you're gonna deal with it, but it is, is a problem as it's set up. 6,000 Black, Brown, minority people were deliberately and violently displaced by the city of Palm Springs, its leaders and elected officials, from Section 14. That's a quote from the attorney representing the survivors. It's not factual. That quote was made at an interfaith service at the Methodist Church. I had the I had to read it. I had to look at the video again today because I still don't believe it. There were never 5,000 people of color in Section 14. The people in Section 14 were good people. The Indians were good people. The city councils at the time were good people. You're inherently good people. This was an incredibly difficult situation. Councilmember DeHart, you've taken a little bit of heat for the Human Rights Commission report. It's factually wrong, and it hasn't been fixed. The Human Rights Commission recently, this year, has voted twice to talk about it. We're not sure who keeps it off their agenda when they vote unanimously to put it on the agenda. That's wrong. That's not transparent. Let them talk about it. You should be talking about it. The community should be talking about it. From the standpoint of information I've provided.
Apologies. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Madam Clerk, is it possible for us to have a louder buzz? Because I think people are not realizing that the mic is cut off. I didn't realize the mic was cut off. Yeah, please. Thank you very much. Randall Sturgis, followed by Dieter Crawford.
Counsel, I'm concerned about the engagement of this consulting firm to explore reparations. I say that not because I'm against reparations. In fact, the opposite. I say it because I'm against an issue of this magnitude being decided by a few council members without the full light of day shown on this issue to the voters of Palm Springs. I suspect that not even two in 10 voters know what you're about to embark on here. This is not an issue that should be publicized with normal postings as though you are changing an intersection or adding a building to the school. This is a momentous decision, and the only reason that it wouldn't be publicized so that a majority of Palm Springs voters know what's going on is that people might be afraid of what the voters would say. I'm not afraid of what the voters would say. I think the voters would be fair, and I think the issue could be dealt with. But I really believe strongly that you're not publicizing this enough. Look at the turnout for such an important issue. And I encourage you to really reexamine what you're doing with that.
Thank you. Dieter Crawford, followed by David Feltman.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. I want to speak on item 3A. My name is Dieter Crawford. I live in the Desert Highland Gateway Estates neighborhood. I'm a board member for the Palm Springs Black History Committee as well as a member of the Section 14 Survivors Group. My family came here to Palm Springs in the early 1950s and settled on Section 14 of the Agua Caliente Indian Reservation until we were forcefully evicted. Then we relocated to the Desert Highland neighborhood where our family still lives today. Just want to advocate to have us move forward with reparations consulting. This is something that our families have been asking for as far as compensation for many, many years for being evicted from Section 14. And I think that it's time that we have an expert look at it and come up with an decision to see if it's worth making possible or even making happen. So once again, just like to thank the council for even taking up this issue. I know you guys issued an apology a while back as well. So just want to get some closure on the issue of our families being displaced. And we've all heard the stories from both sides. You know, the conservators and the city colluded to evict minority residents from downtown Palm Springs to make Palm Springs what it is today. So we just want to get closure on this issue. And once again, my name's Dieter Crawford. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. David Feltman, followed by Delia Ruiz Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, members of the council, our new city manager. Welcome, welcome, and staff. Here to comment on item 1I. I want to commend city staff and the council for what you will be approving, the playground equipment and shade structures for Demuth and Victoria Parks. This is one of the many critically important capital expenditures needed to bring our parks up to standard. Please keep investing in capital improvements and the staff to manage the ongoing planning for capital projects along with the use and maintenance of these facilities. At the same time, we have a critical failure with the maintenance of public restrooms. For all intents and purposes, they are unusable. This is a serious matter that deserves to have the full attention of council and staff. Who suffers as a result of this failure? Everyone, of course, but importantly, our kids. What they see and experience is horrific. I've talked to a number of moms and dads in the past few weeks, and their stories are devastating. They were shocking to me. I know there are issues with the unhoused, but we can still solve this. If you have to double down or triple down on the expenditure to clean these bathrooms, please do so. If it takes an outsized expenditure to keep these bathrooms clean, so be it. Find your inner radical on this issue. You can be the council that solves this once and for all. It is a longstanding problem, and I bet if there is visible improvement, each of you will be lauded for your collective decision to solve this. Please do not run up the white flag and say this is the best we can do. I know we can do better. Let's do it.
Thank you. Delia Ruiz Taylor, followed by Alvin Taylor.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Thank you. My name is Delia Ruiz Taylor. I am here for item 3A.
Delia, can you just move the mic down a little bit so we can hear you? Thank you.
I am a Section 14 survivor. I'm here in favor of Palm Springs hiring a reparations consultation firm, preferably Linda Mann Consulting Firm. I was going to stop there, Your Honor, but I now want to make it clear for those who are here giving their opinions. My father built our home with his own hard-earned money. We rented the land from the Native Americans, but the home was ours. We were thrown out and had to leave our home without compensations until something this devastating has happened to those giving their lack of research comments. Consider doing your research. I'll give you a head start. Try reading the dissertation written by Ryan M. Cray, "The Path to Paradise," who tells a story from all the sides that were involved. You're so concerned about losing money. How much money was made by getting us out of there and bringing in all the rich and elite to enjoy beautiful Palm Springs without the human beings that you so heartlessly had thrown out? Thank you.
Thank you, Delia. Alvin Taylor, followed by David Latte.
Hello, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protam, Jeffrey Bernstein. Giving honor also to our newest, one of our newest people here, our city manager, Scott C. Stiles. Great to see you. And of course, I love our chief, Andrew Mills. Glad to be in the same room with each and every one of you, our staff, Chrissy Hosey, Ron DeHart, Lisa Milton. Good to see you all. You know, it's kind of interesting that to me, it's really sad to hear people talking about Section 14 that never lived on Section 14. There are experts in Section 14. I mean, we got a guy here who served, a couple of guys who served on the city. I mean, you know, just because you served on the city doesn't make you an expert on what took place on Section 14. Get the heck out of the way and let the experts do their job. Yeah, that's what it's about. You know, it's really sad. You know, if you never lived on Section 14, you haven't suffered the injustice and the pain and the trauma that I, Alvin Taylor, suffered. That's who I am. I've been here since 1953, and I'm qualified to give an account of exactly what took place here. And no matter how much people want to twist it, the facts about the Agua Caliente tribe is clear. They invited us to live on the reservation. They wanted us here while the civic-minded, public-minded civic leaders set out to construct a city to eliminate and favor its so-called most worthy citizens, which was folks that weren't folks of color. They were white folks. And they didn't care. Their job was to expropriate, to get rid of us. They didn't care about having room for us. And so this was an injustice.
Thanks. Thank you. Next speaker. All right. David Latte, followed by Norm King. I don't actually see David. So if we can go to Norm King, followed by Dr. Alvera. Oh, apologies, David. Go ahead. David, the floor is yours. David, are you there? Okay, let's. Sorry, Norm, if you want to go ahead, please.
I'm Norm King. Tonight's reparations consultant report states during the late 1960s, the city participated in the eviction of Section 14 residents. Part of the statement is false. The city did not evict any resident. But this statement does correct one of the false statements made in previous staff reports and in the reparations RFP, which incorrectly state that in 2022, the council issued a formal apology for the city's role in evicting individuals in the late 1950s and 1960s. This is false. The city council apology resolution refers only to alleged actions after 1964. Check it yourself. Instead of commissioning the consultant to review the claims made by descendants of those living in Section 14 in '65 and '66, the RFP incorrectly refers to the 1950s and '60s and thus exponentially expands the time period. Another falsehood, the apology resolution written by Mr. DeHart states that the city kept no official records of persons displaced. However, the Desert Sun quoted the city officials at the time that records were kept. And lo and behold, the city has recently reduced, released long-hidden documents which substantiate that. The '65-'66 elections were the second time tenants living in Section 14 were evicted by the Indian landowners. The first round of eviction notices occurred in 1961. Mayor Frank Bogert was instrumental in negotiations with the BIA to impose a six-month moratorium on these evictions. You're probably surprised you've never heard this before. Let me quote Desert Sun, July 1961. In May, Ray Jackson, director of the Palm Springs BIA, advised that the tenancy date for completion of this removal project, 430 eviction notices, is June 30, 1961. Jackson had explained that the individual Indian Alatis court-appointed guardians and conservators in concert with the Bureau had determined that all residential buildings must be removed from the southwest quarter of Section 14 to permit redevelopment to the highest and best use, coming from the Bureau. Quote, Desert Sun, June 61.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next speaker is Dr. William Alvera, followed by Diane McAlpine.
Thank you, Mayor Grace Gardner. I'm so proud of you and council members and staff. So I'm here on item 3A, and thank you for having me. And wanted to make sure I was reading this very clearly that I am in favor of Palm Springs hiring reparations consultant. Thank you so much, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Next is Diane McAlpine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I would like to urge you to vote no on the item on the agenda today regarding retaining a consulting firm to devise a plan to create reparations for people who were evicted from Section 14. Before jumping off a cliff and spending half a million dollars on figuring a way to blame one group for the misfortunes of another, no matter which side of the issue you're on, we don't move to the penalty phase until a verdict has been handed down. We don't know if a crime has been committed, let alone who committed one. Is eviction a crime? Is destruction of improvements constructed on rented land by tenants subsequently destroyed by the property owner? Eviction is a legal device used by property owners to reclaim their own land under a variety of legal conditions. For example, if a tenant stops paying rent or if a tenant engages in illegal activity, like running a meth lab or a brothel. If a tenant deliberately and maliciously destroys the property. These are all reasons why eviction is a device that is used in law to protect the property owner. And oh, by the way, one way is if a tenancy is terminated. So the question is, were these tenancies terminated properly? There were many arguments that point to, yes, they were. And there were some unfortunate events along the way in terms of who actually received notice, whether it was the owner or whether it was the tenant. But the point is, eviction, when it happens to people, is most uncomfortable. It's very sad for the people who are evicted. It's sad for people.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go back now to David Latte. David, are you there? All right. We're going to move forward then. At this time, I believe we have finished our public.
Madam Mayor, we have Jovita Ayala. Send your text.
Ayala.
Okay. Ayala, she's back on Zoom.
Okay, fantastic. So Jovita Ayala, if you can, you can go ahead.
Oh, yes. My name is Jovita Ayala, and I was born in '53 onto Section 14. And I remember I was eight years old when we had to move away in a hurry. And we were a family of five children, mom and dad. And I believe, I know my mom had stress. She was always made me drive her down there to the street on Section 14 to show her where the house was. And all these years, I didn't know she was affected by it. And she loved the area and the neighbors and my aunts and uncles that were across the street. It was wholesome. It was a nice place. Everybody respected everybody. Everybody said hi. Everybody knew everybody. And my dad died very young. He was 64 when he died, but he always stayed quiet. And he, I, as well. And they didn't get any compensation or any what they invested in because he was actually buying the house, the structure. And I look back now, and I look, wow. You know, if it would have been resolved then, that would have been fine. But, you know, you have to pick up the pieces and start all over wherever you go in life. So it was hard-earned money, and he worked in town, of course, making our roads here in town. And my mom worked at the laundromat for the hotels and stuff. And my mom worked at the laundromat for the hotels and stuff. So, you know, we were, we were resourceful. And anyways, I, I hope that, you know, we get reparations, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Linda Mann.
I've been listening, so I'll try to be very, very specific and very, very to the point. So first of all, I just want to clear up a couple of misconceptions. I work as a part of an organization that's HouseTech Columbia University in New York and Howard University in DC. We are an academic institution, and this research is our expertise. We do research to uncover the historical context, to uncover through genealogical and archival research, the survivors and descendants. If existing data is flawed, we will examine that and report based on research. We situate our work within a historical continuum, meeting harms endured over time, as well as an international human rights framework. This was founded post-World War II, championed by US leaders such as Eleanor Roosevelt, such as the right to freedom, the right to education, the right to property. There is no preconceived outcome. The research will lead us. The proposal cost was brought up. The money is not strictly for personnel. The proposal includes support for community meetings and dialogue for public understanding and truth-seeking efforts that matter greatly to this process. This cost also covers academic and research expertise in an area of work that we engage in across the US in communities such as Brown Grove, Virginia, Harris Neck, Georgia, Kansas City, Missouri. Which brings up the point that Palm Springs is not alone in grappling with a complicated past. Starting in 2019, we began mapping occurrences across the United States, and there are over 400 local and state efforts looking at historical racial harms. The international framework that we use has been implemented across the world, Canada and its indigenous communities, South America, Colombia, Chile, Argentina, Ireland, Australia. And these efforts are also situated within the concept of having truth-telling processes as well as...
Thank you. And counsel, for the record, if we want to hear from Ms. Linda Mann at, at the time of the discussion, we can go back and ask her questions at that time. Madam Clerk, is there any other additional public comment that has come in?
No additional public commenters.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you all for your comments. The next item is the consent calendar. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar without item 1I? I say we have a motion by Mayor Protem and a second by Councilmember Holstidge. If we can please vote. Councilmember Middleton, I don't think it registered your vote. Yeah, and, yeah, we're, we're all learning today, but we appreciate it. All right, so motion passes 5-0. At this time, we will now turn to item, well, actually, first, we will turn to Councilmember Middleton, who wanted to make a comment about 1L.
This will be a very quick one. As we are approving a contract for arborist, I would like, at some future date, that we take and ask a professional arborist to examine whether and when and where we should retain the skirts of old leaves that are on our Washingtonian palms. In many locations, they certainly provide historical context, but also in other locations, they are a very serious potential safety hazard as there are pedestrians walking through them. And so, at some point, if we could have that study done.
Thank you, Councilmember. We are now turned to item 1I. Can we have a staff report about that, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council. As part of the city's ongoing parks maintenance program, this contract will allow Public Works to continue its efforts in maintaining, upgrading, and beautifying our city parks. Specifically, this contract will allow for replacement of all playground equipment at Victoria and Demuth Parks. The age of the current playground at Demuth is almost 20 years old. Playground at Victoria is almost 22 years old. These playgrounds have a typical life expectancy of about 15 years. New playground equipment complies with ADA and all applicable safety standards. During the playground replacements, shade structures will be installed over all of the playground equipment at both parks. New playground rubber surfacing will also be installed at both, both parks, allowing for a safe play experience. Public Works staff worked with Parks and Recreation staff on the layout and playground features. Those plans were reviewed by the Park Enhancement Ad Hoc Subcommittee for input and feedback. February 27th, 2023, the Parks and Rec Commission approved the project to move forward to city council for consideration with the request to add an additional shade structure at Victoria Park. Originally, it was one shade structure. They asked that we add a second. This additional shade structure has been included in the project. In accordance with the city's municipal code pertaining to the use of cooperative purchasing programs, staff is requesting to enter into a contract with Miracle Recreation Equipment utilizing Source Wells Cooperative Contract 010521 LTS. Staff has reviewed the cooperative contract pricing and finds that Miracle Recreation Equipment is offering the city competitive pricing. Therefore, staff recommends approval of agreement number 23C089 in the amount of $1,325,848.45 with Miracle Recreation Equipment Company. concludes my report. We also have our Parks and Recreation Director available, along with members from Miracle Recreation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Holstidge, do you want to start?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do you mind saying your name and your position for the public, please?
Absolutely. Thank you for, thank you for asking, Councilmember. David Maccabee, Director of Public Works.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
We heard a significant amount of public comment about this issue, applauding the city for taking action and putting shade structures in our parks. So thank you so much to city staff for bringing this forward and all your work engaging with the public, the Parks and Rec Commission and an ad hoc committee to get input and expand the scope. So thank you very much to staff. I'll just say, I remember the first time Mayor Garner walked in this council chamber to give public comment, must have been 2019 or earlier than that, and she asked for shade structures at the parks. And so that was many years ago, and we've been advocating since. And thank you to Measure J commissioners, like Jeffrey Bernstein, who brought this forward and supported. So I just have a few questions that we heard in public comment. So one, could you speak to the water features? We heard a lot about that. We get a lot of requests. I know I've personally sent a lot of photos to city staff over the years as well about the water features and the maintenance and all of that. So could you just say a little bit about if the company offers water features? I know that the intent is to do a parks master plan and plan out big water features, but both at Demuth, at Victoria Park, at Sunrise Park, and a few others, there's old water features where it's all built out, but the turtles will remove. So does this company sell water feature products that we could put in those locations as we wait to plan larger water play for younger kids?
Thank you for the questions. I, I can't speak to whether or not the company offers that. We can certainly ask them. I have looked into the old water features, so they were removed in 2017. From what I understand, they were maybe unsafe and old at the time, but they have completely been removed, so there is no infrastructure left for that. However, I do know that the Parks and Recreation Commission and Parks and Recreation staff are very interested in that, and my understanding is that that will be part of their master plan. I'm sure that their director can speak to that, but that is my understanding.
Thank you. I believe that they were actually removed much later than that, because I've been asking for that for a few years now. And we first had them, and we had a lot of requests to turn them back on. And then we asked so much, they were removed. And so we're in worse circumstances. And so it seems like, I, I go to the parks almost every day with my toddler, there is still underground infrastructure, I believe, because only the actual physical turtles were removed, so.
Certainly. Certainly, that's true. So the concrete area that was there, that is still there.
Thank you. And then, if I can just ask a few more questions, I'll be quick. Thank you to my colleagues. So one of the shade structures is a complete full shade structure, so it offers complete shade. And then one of the shade structures is like triangles put together, which allows a lot of sun to come through. So could you explain the reasoning about why not doing similar, the same shade in both of the areas and why one was picked over the other?
Certainly, my, and I, and our designer can speak to that, but my understanding is the way that the playground at Victoria is sort of laid out, that that will actually get better coverage. So what we have at Demuth is more like a straight line, so then a, a solid structure really makes more sense in that realm. That was the idea, because in Victoria, we're a little bit limited for room, so we don't want to have an overly large footprint. But I can have them speak to that if you would like more information. They are here.
Thank you. That's okay. We'll hold that and see if any other council members are interested. I just want to know what reasoning went into it.
Yes, absolutely.
Because I know, as a parent, I have preferences, because often those triangles have a lot of sun that comes through, and you really don't have the shade coverage. I think we currently have that at Sunrise Park, and I would say it's not sufficient shade to use the park in the sun. But, so I'd love, I'd love some input on that, but I don't want to hold this up. I very much want it to go forward. One other question about the ground. So we had redone the ground at, at Demuth, and then we talked about it for Victoria Park. So we removed sand or other natural materials for now rubber at Demuth. So are we changing the ground at Victoria Park? Is that included in this?
That's correct. So Victoria is sort of a, almost like a mulchy rubber. So we're going to, that's all going to be replaced, including Demuth, with an actual hard rubber surface. Which is really safer, so we don't get things hidden in there that we don't know about.
That mulch rubber does not work.
Correct.
It's everywhere, and it's a mess. And then could I just ask city staff? We heard a lot about ma- you might not be the right person, but maintenance of the playgrounds, of some of the park structures, definitely as users of the parks, we often experience the slides being closed for months. All that was accurate in the public comment. Swings being missing for months. And so could you just talk about, I know the, we have park rangers that we've hired and are coming on board. Could you talk about what they're doing and the improved maintenance? And also just speak to the, of the safety in the bathrooms, because that was really concerning, the public comment we heard.
Certainly. Excuse me. So for the, for the equipment, for the other playgrounds, they are correct. It does, it is quite lengthy when you order, for instance, a new slide, things like that. So you will see that sometimes we will have to block it off, because we don't want it to be unsafe. But it's not uncommon for it to be many months to get those. It is an unfortunate reality where we're at today. The project before you today, should you approve it, the lead time for that to get everything is about seven months. Again, it's just an unfortunate reality, but we hope that you will approve it. For the restrooms, we certainly have crews and contractors that work on that. Restrooms are closed generally around 10 o'clock. They're cleaned before the restroom's open. Usually, the issues that we have are generally throughout the day, so we, we certainly rely on reporting of, if there's an issue. Staff also checks restrooms throughout the day. We also have a contracted day porter that does the same thing. So we put a lot of effort in that, and I certainly understand their frustration. However, I don't know, to be honest, I don't know that more contracted staff would make a difference in that, in that realm. We certainly couldn't post someone at that restroom 24 hours a day, and I, I think that would be a struggle. Unfortunately, sometimes it's almost a societal thing. Some people are just, can be vandals or have problems. So we may clean it, it may be beautiful, and I go in, use the restroom, someone else goes in 30 minutes later, it could be a different scenario. And please don't think that is an excuse, but that is really a reality that we face every day, and we really, really try to keep those up to date.
If I might just interject that, our contract with our janitorial service, that is a relatively new contract.
Yes.
We did change firms, and they also are available to come out whenever there's an issue that they're, they will be there as soon as possible for any additional cleaning that might be necessary. That does require, as Director Maccabee said, reporting. But now that we have park rangers, just this week, we ramped up with three new park rangers. This is the first time we've ever had this position. We'll have a fourth coming on soon, and they will also help with that, being out in the parks and reporting when they see issues so that they can be addressed more quickly. They have, and I don't know if our Parks and Recreation Director would like to share this good news. I don't mean to steal her thunder, but they have a, a uniform that identifies them, and the idea is the public is, can ask them questions, approach them if they have any concerns in the parks.
Great, thank you. I think that's a great solution. I know the council has supported that since reporting, relying on people reporting problems on their own isn't enough. And if you have a toddler or a few, and you're not able to also report problems. So I'm so glad we moved that forward. Thank you. Is there a plan? We got one comment, a comprehensive, for comprehensive shade at all the parks, so we're just starting with these two?
It is our intention to do this with all parks as we replace playground equipment. Because we have other playgrounds that are significantly old, we wouldn't want to put a shade structure down and then remove it a year or two later. So we, the idea is to incorporate that as we're replacing, and we want to continue this, this process. That is my hope.
Do we have a plan? Do we have a list of the age of all the playgrounds and then the order that we might have to...
We don't have an order. We have discussed that with the Parks Commission, so that, that would be sort of in their wheelhouse. I can tell you that I don't have the age on top of my head, but the other parks are beyond 15 years easily.
And not to date myself, I'm 36, so I'm not even that young, but these parks, playgrounds are from, were installed before I graduated high school. I could have played on these playgrounds as a minor. Really shocking. So I hope we don't get in this hole again.
Correct.
And like Naomi Soto commented, I hope we have a plan for maintenance and repairs so that we're not just funding the problems once we're too far in the hole. That's what happened to us with street repairs and so many other deferred maintenance issues. So thank you so much. Those are my main questions. But I would love to, before I let go, I'll just say, I would love to see us include water features. I don't think it's sufficient to wait for a whole master plan to include any water features when your, most of our parks are already, I believe, piped and have an area and are ready to go for some at least simple water play. So I'd like to see us move forward quickly, especially because it's already 100 degrees, and some of us are trapped inside with toddlers and need that water play really to have outdoor experiences, and we heard from so many parents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just to one additional comment regarding the playground equipment and replacing it in a timely manner, this is, part of this problem is now we have Victoria Park that won't be usable for an entire year, and that's really unacceptable. So we have to be able to identify which parks need to be replaced now so that the equipment is coming before these parks are then closed off to the public because they're unsafe. So I know that we've had a lot of changes in staff, and there's a lot of new, good things happening right now in the city, and so I really appreciate that. But that's definitely very frustrating for all of us, and especially, as Councilmember Holstidge said, I've been talking about this problem since 2018 here at City Hall, and we're still, we're just now addressing it. Yeah, I remember when these parks were put in, over 20 years ago. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember Holstidge, for pulling this, because if you didn't, I, I would have. Thank you for the report. I'm very glad to see these coming. I have, I have some questions. Can you confirm the timing of when Victoria and Demuth, the new parks, will be in?
I can confirm that the order time, should council approve this, is about six, seven months. So that, that is our struggle. But once that comes in, the contractors, you know, we can really get them moving quickly. So if the, if that time is shortened, we'll absolutely get it completed sooner.
But where did the November 24 date come?
That is, if, if we have the full seven months, and then we, we will do Victoria first, obviously, because it's closed. And then over to Demuth. But our intention is to shorten that window.
Demuth will be opened during this period, but Victoria is closed.
Sorry?
Demuth will be opened during this period, Victoria is closed.
Absolutely.
Okay. Can I also ask you what happens to the existing rest, uh, equipment?
Certainly. So any metal pieces will be recycled. Any of the plastic parts are generally going to go to a landfill because they're not recyclable. I have looked into that, and that's generally what will happen with the, with the old pieces.
Will that happen with the new equipment as well, that there will be non-recyclable?
That's a great question. I can defer to our reps from Miracle. I do, I do not know. But I'd be happy to have them answer that, if you'd like.
That would be good to know and be good to have it sort of as a part of our policy in buying this, this equipment. Can you also say, who chose the color options? I know there was different color options for this.
Certainly. So there are a myriad of color options available for not only the shade structures, but the playground equipment itself. So again, should council approve tonight, then this will go back so that they can, the Parks Commission can choose the colors. They want, they were very clear that they wanted bright, vibrant colors, many, many, many colors. So that was what was decided. So should you, so the rendering that you see tonight shows you the layout and everything that's there, but it's not necessarily green, I think, is what is in the rendering. That is not the color that you will be getting.
Okay. And could you tell me, thank you. Can you tell me what you think the timing is for the master parks plan? I know, I think the city council approved it last year.
I believe she is very close, but I would have to defer to our Parks and Rec Director.
Thanks.
So thank you for the question. Yvonne Wise, your Parks and Recreation Director. So right now, we are working with our master plan ad hoc of the Parks and Recreation Commission. We have a draft of the RFP for the master plan consultant. We are going to need a few more weeks to get that polished up so that we're happy with it. It will then go out, and our hope is, is that we will have the master plan consulted, hired in just a few months. And then those public outreach meetings will commence later this year. And with the style of the master plan that we're looking to do, we're looking for a type of master plan that has more focused, easy-to-achieve objectives. While it will still include a very lofty vision for what we want for all of our spaces, we know right now, for instance, that we wanted to include a special section on water features for our parks. So we wanted to have our consultant, or a consultant who's knowledgeable about youth play, water interactive features, focus just on that. And that will give us basically the stepping stones to implement a very large vision faster. What we don't want is the master plan that we put on the shelf. We want a master plan that actually comes with some guidelines or sort of, you know, some sequencing of how we can start implementing.
Okay. I appreciate that. I know it's not a simple process. I too wish this had been done with water features initially. I want to just raise one more point, couple of points, and then a comment. Can I, I know I brought this up before, but when you, when things happen at our parks, the signage and communication is so important with our community. Victoria Park was closed for a while when it just said, "closed for repair", without saying what's being done, or when it's going to open, or where you could go. Now, I have seen some new signs that give some information. Are those up now?
Yeah, so we've installed some new signs that are also friendly and explain what's coming as opposed to just saying it's closed. And we also have updates on our website now. So for Victoria Park as well as Demuth Park, it has the preliminary renderings of the playground structures. And one of the other vehicles that we're using as a way to communicate to the public about Parks and Rec are the monthly Parks and Rec Commission meetings. So those are on the fourth Monday of every month at 5:30.
Okay. Can I make a suggestion? Because I've, I've seen, I've seen the signs. And the most prominent thing is a phone number and email, which I'm sure you get, staff gets a lot of phone calls and emails. If you could replace, add a larger QR code or something to the website that specifically goes to the renderings and the details, because a lot of the questions that I'm getting asked are on the website or, or there. And, and we don't actually tell people, and to go to the city's website is a little confusing. But you could go directly to the page that says, "this is what's happening in the park, this is what it's going to look like, this is the timing." I think it would save, save staff a lot of time. I know this is happening now with the dog park too. I would, I would just point out, not everybody knows where every other park in the city is. So when you say that there's another park at Demuth, or the dog park is at Demuth, not everybody, people often know their local park. So I think that would be something to do.
Absolutely do that.
And I agree that we should get something. I will say, just in comment, that I think our parks, with no disrespect to anyone, really are very substandard for our city. And I'm glad, I'm glad we're working on the plan to make it work. And this is, we're seeing this with the playgrounds, we've seen it with the swim center, we're seeing it now with the dog parks. It will come back with pickleball. We're seeing it with the sports fields. Even, even the downtown park, the most popular thing are the concerts and movies, and, and there's no real AV system there, which, which is strange to me. And we have a, my Gene Autry Park has a bocce ball court, which is beautiful, and it just needs to be leveled, but it's been six months or more. And I think as we go into our budget season, I think our council, I have, from what I hear from most other of us, is that the parks are probably really a top priority. And I would be sure that we, as we go into this master plan, that we all think about carefully what we can do to bring them up to the speed, to the level that this city should be. Because they're used by everybody, and they're also tourist attractions too as well. And, and some of these changes are not that expensive or time-consuming. And a lot of it just takes some focus, and I, and I probably staff as well. So I want to thank you for being here and focusing on this, and this, and this progress. And just to, to know that I know that this council is going to keep pushing for more with our parks. So thank you.
Much appreciated.
Thank you to everyone. Councilmember DeHart.
You called it Gene Autry Park. I think it's Gateway.
I call it Gene Autry in El Rancorista.
So thank you. A question on the playground, the equipment that's coming in. You know, I, I learned recently about communications boards and, and how non-speaking children use the boards to communicate and point to pictures on those communications board. Are we including a communications board with each of these sets of, in each of the playgrounds?
Great question, and let me let our designer speak to that, because he can be very, much more specific than I can be. Please, thank you.
Hi, my name is Bryce Lawrence. I'm a designer for Miracle Playground Sales, the sales rep for Miracle Recreation. On this particular one, we don't have a communications board. If it's something you guys would like to see, you can definitely add it. When we design these playgrounds, excuse me, we try to be as inclusive as possible. And inclusive means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. But we want to provide the five senses for all the kids, ground level as well as elevated. So while we may not have a communication board specifically on these two parks, there are other ways for kids to interact non-verbally. So, but if it, if it's something that we'd like to see, we can definitely work up a communication board. I don't necessarily know that we have one standard, but we do have a great custom panel option for our manufacturer, and they can create a custom panel for what you're looking for.
Yeah, I think it's, it would be an important feature to have that shouldn't be that expensive.
No, it wouldn't, it would add or possibly change the cost. I'd have to, I'd have to see that, see what they determine.
Excellent. Thank you. Are you the one that's going to tell us about the new equipment being recyclable?
I can answer, yes, I can answer a few of the questions that were brought up here. As far as recyclable, David is right that the older equipment, because of the plastics, the way that the color was put on it, it has to go into a landfill. The newer equipment, they changed the way they applied the, the color with a powder now. So it is actually recyclable. We can also provide a lead report, which shows all the lead points that you get back for the recycling and the, and the green nature of the playground. So we can provide that for both playgrounds, so for you guys to view. Not everything is 100% recyclable. I believe there is a standard that they try to meet where about 60% of the playground is recyclable, depending on what pieces are picked. But again, I can get you a lead report that would fill in more on that.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you tell us about the colors? So what color do you typically see this? It's very bright for me as well, and so I appreciate the bright colors. I saw that there's a whole range. We traditionally have, it's hard to select colors as a, in a democratic process because it's subjective. So could you just tell us what colors people usually see, if, you know, how the colors were selected? And then could you tell us if you sell water features?
Okay, colors first. So colors are across the board. When we originally proposed this, we proposed more of a nature theme, brown, green, tan, which is what most of the parks here have. In Southern California, some people want that. They kind of want it to blend in with the background, so they, they pick those colors. I would say more and more, we're seeing more of these brighter colors. The idea is that while the, the natural color may fit in with the surrounding area better, it's not very exciting for children. So kids want to see the brighter colors and things like that. So we do tend to see more of the, on this one, there's chartreuse and very bright, vibrant colors because it makes it more exciting. So that is what we tend to see more now, but we do still have people that, you know, do natural colors, they do primary colors. It's across the board, and we can mix and match however we feel. But you're right, with a democratic party on that, sometimes there's a lot of cooks in the kitchen, so it's hard to settle on one color scheme. And as far as the water play, we ourselves do not sell it anymore, but we have a company that we work very closely with. Actually, my uncle is the vice president of that company now. So we can obviously talk to David and, and Parks and Rec and, and get them working together to get that in. I will say, water play is a lot more difficult to coordinate than playgrounds. Playground, you basically put in concrete footings, you build it, you're good to go. Water play with the state of California, there's a lot to go into as far as drainage. And in California, they want to see recirculated systems, which are very expensive, very big tanks. So there's a lot that goes into it, even, you know, how far a restroom can be from the water area. So there is more that goes into it. But, you know, we will gladly work with, with David and Parks and Rec to get you guys something if that's what you're looking for.
Thank you. And thank you to Councilmember DeHart for asking about communications board. I would love to see that included if we're able to easily. And it looks like, do you have other adaptive equipment here? It looks like you have adaptive swings for kids in wheelchairs and other thoughts that went into making sure that this is accessible for kids with disabilities?
That was brought up to us, definitely, that we wanted the inclusive seats with the harness that comes down.
Great, thank you. And just to city staff, and as we're talking about this parks plan, because when you tell me a parks master plan, I, I feel very worried because I hear two years for a plan that will shit, sit on the shelf, excuse me, and, and that's not what we need. And so I think as we think that through a plan, like having short-term, medium-term, and long-term improvements that we can do, like there are a million short-term, very affordable things that we could do to significantly increase the enjoyment of our parks. So thank you to Mayor Protem for raising that.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, do we, can we have a motion and a second? We have a motion by Councilmember Holstich, second by, by Councilmember DeHart. All right, so motion passes 5-0. Thank you all for your work and for your comments. The next item is Item 2A, a public hearing for Community Development Block Grant 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan and Budget Adoption Hearing, also for authorization for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the fiscal year 2023-2024. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members.
Hold on just a second. Jay. Okay. No, no problem. Just a little bit of too, too much noise. Go ahead, Jay.
Yes. Jay Verata, Director of Community and Economic Development. And before we get started, I'd like to point out a technical correction that needs to be made in the staff report. On the table, on page three, the first number under Public Services should be $62,026 instead of $55,000. So just to note that in the staff report. The location or the numbers, it should be 62,026. And that number represents the allocation for that category of expenditure. And 55,000 was the number that was actually allocated. So this action is a request to open a public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, and authorize a city manager to execute the sub-recipient agreements. For fiscal year 2024, the city has been awarded a CDBG grant amount, in the amount of $413,506. As discussed at previous city council meetings, these funds are proposed to be used for residential rehab program at $358,506, fair housing services at $55,000. And administration actually is a zero allocation. And before introducing our housing services administrator who's with me, Ariel Telfrey-Williams, to discuss the residential rehab program, I will just quickly mention that in the public services category, the CDBG funds will be used to provide fair housing services in the amount of $55,000. And with that, here's Ariel to speak more about the residential rehab program.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Council. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our residential rehab program. I spoke about it the last time. We are expanding a program that is already in place. Right now, the program offers residents about $1,500 to make small fixes to different things going on in their homes, plumbing, different things like that. But now we're going to be expanding it to making it larger, so we can cover things up to $15,000 for our residents. And that includes roofing, siding, air conditioners, things like that, things that are in disrepair. And so we're really excited to be able to do that. And I know last time there was a question on how we're going to advertise that, so I want to make sure that I hit on that point for folks. So one of the main things that we do already is work with our code enforcement team very closely. They see the residents every day, and they already let them know what programs we have available. And we have already spoken to them about how in the future they're going to get new flyers, and so they'll have more information and be able to give their information to us. And then in addition to that, we plan on reaching out to One PS, and we'd like to go to meetings to talk to neighborhood representatives, so they have that information as well. We'd like to use the city's social networking sites. And then we are going to be updating our website to be more user-friendly so people can find it. So Mayor Protem Bernstein, when you were talking about the QR codes, things like that, on the flyer so people can get directly to the website instead of kind of clicking around and trying to find specific things like that. And then we also would like to work with our front desk staff because they also field a lot of calls that come our direction, so we want to make sure they have that information. And then the city is also listed with 211 Riverside County as a resource for various things, so we will make sure that they are updated as well. So that is the gist of what's going on with our residential rehab program, starting in the new fiscal year.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions from council? Mayor Protem, Councilmember DeHart.
Ariel or Jay, in earlier in public comment, we heard concern about the order of how are these going to be awarded? So is it first come, first served, or based on priority of need?
So because this is a program for low to moderate homeowners, generally what we see is first come, first served works best. It's just helpful for us on our side to make sure we're getting all the paperwork together. Because this is a federally funded program, there's kind of a lot of paperwork that goes through it. So we kind of want to make sure that the program just runs through smoothly, and there's not a large delay for someone who could get help. who could get help while we're kind of waiting for some other things. But we definitely do take in mind, especially as funds start to dwindle, like, okay, we see what this person needs and, you know, maybe again they're missing a whole window or something like that, so we want to make sure that we're also helping not just with the need financially, but the need of what's going on in the home at the end of the program. Right now, when it starts, we are going to do first come, first served unless directed otherwise.
And is that a norm for federally funded programs?
Yes, especially something like CDBG. What I've seen in other communities, it is always first come, first served, again, just because of what happens on our side with all of the paperwork, getting contractors out there and things like that. It's easier just to move forward to make sure that we are able to serve as many residents as possible.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Ariel. Thank you for answering my other questions about how to get the word out. My second part of that is, is there then an application that people need to fill out?
Yes, so there is an application. We are in the process of updating it, but it will be updated on our website by the time fiscal year starts. And so the application, and there's information on there on everything that's needed, so people will have that, again, pay stubs, bank statements, all of those documents, it will all be on the application. And they can also call if they have any questions, and we can walk them through what to do.
They can call you and walk it through. Can you?
Yes.
Is it possible for them to come in to fill it out to the city or somewhere?
Yes, so they can come in to fill it out. It would, I will say now, it will be easier if we start on the phone, just because a lot of it is statements and different things like that that you would have at home versus driving back and forth in, but yes, absolutely.
Do they have to fill out like a PDF online or something, or they print everything out and send it in?
We can print it out. Something we also do now is when people request, we do print it out and mail it to folks. So that's something that we're already doing.
I'm only asking this because I know somebody was actually for another, the Monarch Housing was trying to, and they were at a public computer where they couldn't fill out a PDF and hadn't really thought about how they would. So we did it for them. But yes, I would consider that if a low to moderate income is having trouble, that, you know, they may have, they may not have computers, they may not have all kinds of things. So to take that into account, to make it as easy as possible. But I appreciate all the outreach, I think going to One PS and then offering to go to individual meetings is really helpful because those people will know how to reach their neighborhood as well.
Yes.
Obviously, the door-to-door. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We heard public comment, received in writing public comment about rehab needed for mobile homes, and obviously that's a unique situation because owners often own their homes. And so will this apply to mobile homes? And then is there state funding or other grants that the city might be able to look at through our consultants or otherwise to look for mobile home repairs, rehab, or other residential rehab programs like this to supplement our money since we know it'll go really, really fast and it's not enough?
Sure. So this money can go towards mobile homes. There are specific things that it can work on. I apologize, I don't have all of the repairs off the top of my head, but that's certainly information we can get to you. Based on the age of some mobile homes, they don't qualify based on federal guidelines, so that is a hard one to get past. We can definitely look into what other resources are out there. The problem with these is most of these programs are federally funded where they give us those strict guidelines, but we can definitely work with consultants to see if there's any state funding or anything on a more local level that we may be able to give funding towards.
Are there any other questions at this time?
No.
Thank you. Thank you to both of you. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. City Clerk, do we have any registered speakers?
We have no registered public hearing speakers.
Fantastic. Well, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from council? All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Holstich, and a second by Councilmember DeHart. We can vote. Before we need to vote on our front panel. If we can just do a voice vote for Councilmember Middleton. Thank you. All right, we're still working out the kinks on this, but presumably, once we figure it out, it should be faster. All right. Thank you all very much. The next item on the agenda is Item 3A, to award a service agreement for reparations program services. And I do want to let council and the public know that after we discuss this item, we will take a short break. Can we have a staff report, please, on Item 3A?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, Jeff Ballinger, City Attorney presenting this item. The item before you is consideration of a consulting agreement between the City of Palm Springs and the trustees of the Columbia University and the City of New York. As the council is aware, between 1930 and 1965, the Section 14 property that is held in trust by the federal government on behalf of the members of the Kuaia Band of Akuakaliente Indians and the tribe itself was home to many residents, including Black, Indigenous, and other minority residents. During the 1960s and after changes in federal law allowed for longer-term leases of this tribal land, the City of Palm Springs assisted in the eviction of Section 14 residents so that the Section 14 property could be developed commercially. More recently, on September 29, 2021, the Palm Springs City Council considered and issued a formal apology for the city's role in evicting the individuals from Section 14, and at that meeting directed additional work to be done by city staff. At the meeting on November 18, the city staff returned to the city council with a report to further consider reparations programs. Thereafter, on April 21, 2022, the city council discussed potential reparations programs. At that time, the city council provided direction to city staff regarding the exploration of programmatic reparations as well as potentially direct monetary compensation. Thereafter, on May 4, the city received a government claim on behalf of former residents of Section 14. And on November 29, 2022, the city received a document entitled an amended claim form also on behalf of the former residents of Section 14. It should be noted that that more recent claim from November 29, 2022 claimed damages upwards of $2 billion. Staff recognized at that time that this was a very novel issue for local governments to handle and that city staff did not necessarily have the expertise to help develop a reparations program. And therefore, in September of 2022, the city staff developed a solicitation to procure the services of a consultant to help the city develop a reparations program for the city related to Section 14. The city staff released that RFP in November of 2022. And because of the initial time period for response was December 22, 2022, because of the lack of initial responses, the city extended that deadline for responses to January 26, 2023. Eventually, the city did receive two proposals within the extended deadline, at which time city staff began the evaluation process. The evaluation criteria that was considered by city staff included the firm's experience, the team's experience, a demonstration of the understanding of the work, a local preference as well as cost. Staff is presenting to the city council the proposed contract for the trustees of Columbia University and the City of New York as the highest-scoring proposer. The trustees of Columbia University, along with a team that they have assembled, has extensive experience in handling reparations for other communities. They've also indicated that they plan to work with the local business, the other bidder that did not, is not being recommended, in order to provide some local participation. The consultant's proposed scope of work involves a 12-month process that includes conversations with the city councils as well as other key stakeholders. It should be pointed out that there are several touchpoints with the city council throughout this 12-month process, so it's not that the consultant would be doing this in a vacuum, and there would be several opportunities for city council to provide direction to the proposed consultant. The scope of work calls for a kickoff meeting with the city council within the first month of the contract in order to discuss the community engagement process, discuss concerns and prospective challenges, assess the stakeholders' goals and objectives, which would include possible approaches to reparations, recipients, and forms of reparations such as payments versus programs, et cetera. The RFP consultant also proposes to gather historical information from various sources, including documents made available by community members, public records, and newspapers. The proposed scope of work includes conducting oral history interviews with those impacted, similar to the work that's being done by the state of California's Reparations Task Force. Finally, the proposed scope of work includes an attempt to quantify the harms that are alleged to have been caused by the redevelopment of Section 14, as well as the development of a draft, proposed options, which would be ultimately shared with the city council for consideration and feedback. Finally, the city would be asked to form an independent advisory board per the recommendations of the consultant in order to implement the objectives of the plan. I should conclude this presentation with an indication that this action, should the council choose to take it, would align with one of the strategic plan items that the city council has previously adopted, which is for the creation of a Section 14 reparations program. I believe the city council has been provided with copies of both proposals by the consultants as well as the proposed contract. That concludes my presentation. I'm certainly available to answer any questions, as well as Kim Baker, our procurement manager. And we also have the lead consultant for the team, Linda Mann from Cambridge University, who you heard called up earlier during the public comment. She's really on here on Zoom to be able to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from council at this time? Mayor Protem.
I have some questions for the city attorney. Can you also just clarify where the process is right now in terms of the Section 14 survivors and what they, have they sued the city? Just for, have they put a claim, what that means for us non-lawyers?
That's a good question. So the survivors of Section 14 and their attorney have filed a government claim with the city. They filed that in May of 2022, as well as a document entitled An Amended Claim in November of 2022. A claim is a prerequisite to filing a lawsuit in California for damages against a local government entity. And so while they haven't filed the lawsuit in court, they filed, you know, the necessary prerequisite documents in the form of a government claim with the city.
Is there a dollar figure in that claim?
In the most recent claim, in the November 2022 document entitled An Amended Claim, that was the claim in which they alleged harm upwards of $2 billion. In the earlier documents, they included claims of, initially of $1.5 million per survivor. They revised that to $500,000 per survivor. That was back in April of 2022. So the more recent one is $2 billion, up to $2 billion.
Is that per survivor and descendant, or just survivor?
The most recent one is $2 billion total. They didn't break it down by per survivor.
So that's, what is, what would happen? Is there gonna, I mean, are they holding off on a lawsuit at this point, or?
So I've been in communication, frequent communication with the representative, the attorney who represents the claimants, Ms. Reva Martin, and she's indicated that she is interested in trying to resolve this through dialogue and a resolution, a mutually agreeable discussion, yes.
Okay. So during this process, if we hire a consultant or go through this, they're holding off on doing, for now?
Yes.
But they could file a lawsuit at any time?
Correct. We do have what's called a tolling agreement with her, which basically says, we're going to toll any potential statute of limitation while we have this discussion with her.
Okay. And you mentioned there was only two people that responded to the RFP?
Only two firms, yes.
Where did we advertise or market it?
I think Ms. Baker can, I think it was advertising in local newspapers on Planet Bids, which is a pretty widespread bidding software for local public agencies. And we also did kind of focused outreach at a symposium in December of '22 that was focused on reparations. I think Ms. Baker can indicate anything else.
You got it, you got it. And then we also always advertise in the desert sun as well.
We didn't reach out to like universities with history departments or research departments?
Not particularly for this, no.
Or any other research? It just, no other people would have, it just seemed like a sort of limited application, not that there's...
Yes, it's very limited, and that's part of the problem. I talked to all of the other cities that are working on reparations type of programs. I talked to Culver City, I spoke to West Hollywood, and they're actually behind us. They're in the process, but they're farther behind than we are. So they're just starting their contextual studies, so they're basically behind us. And they've had the same, even finding someone to do the historical contextual studies, they've had struggles. They, West Hollywood got one proposal for that.
Have you seen any of the, you mentioned other ones that are doing reparations that involve tribal land?
No.
As well? So that's, it's sort of an added layer?
Complexity that we have, yes.
Yes. Okay. And I guess I'll hold some more questions until other people go, and then I have some comments, but...
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you. Mr. Ballinger, as you mentioned, this could become a lawsuit, and the amount of damages that are being claimed approach to $2 billion is what I'm told.
That's what's in their claim, yes.
All right. If this were to go to court, in your judgment, what would the court find in terms of the liability of the city?
I think that the claimants would have a difficult time obtaining a judgment against the city based on factors such as the time that has elapsed since the activities involving Section 14, as well as the fact that there was actually a test case in court, in state court, back in the late '60s, in which the court found that the city had not done anything wrong. So I think they would, the claimants and the plaintiffs in that case would face a steep uphill battle if they were in court.
So if the value of this claim in civil court is, in your opinion, not likely to prevail, then for us to make a determination that we need to expend municipal funds, would we not need to identify specific wrongs on the part of the City of Palm Springs that, and city council would have to come to a majority opinion on those wrongs? Am I correct?
I think so, and it's my understanding that at least the previous direction from the previously constituted council was to undertake that type of a study to find out if in fact there had been wrongs perpetrated by the city. So, and that's what's being presented in part. The other part, obviously, of the contract is if the consultant believes that there are and presents those to the council, then potential programs could be presented to the council.
All right. Thank you. I think those are my questions. I will have comments as well.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions at this time? Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on this. I know it's not easy, both emotionally and just it hasn't been done, although we did hear the RFP responder say that there's been 400 other jurisdictions. I know that you're sort of figuring it out as you go, especially in California. We heard public comment about the RFP, which means Request for Proposal for the Public, and the process, and why that wasn't, if it was publicly noticed, and all of that. So can you just talk to what process went forward, about how to create the request for proposals, how it was decided, what was in it, how it was put out into the public, and how those decisions were made so that everyone understands where this came from?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So we started out, you know, pretty much working with staff, legal staff, council, to develop the scope of work for the solicitation. to develop the scope of work for the solicitation, and spent quite, quite a bit of time refining that scope of work and trying to get it right. One of the things we knew we wanted to do was focus on the contextual study first. You know, we have a lot of good historical information, but the first thing we want them to do is validate that information before we do anything else. So, that was a big part of the scope, and the community engagement as well. So, once the scope was developed and the RFP was ready to go, it followed our normal process. It was developed, it was published in the newspaper to run two consecutive Sundays, it was published on our website. As Jeff mentioned, there was some attendance at a symposium to let people know of what we were trying to accomplish. And then, because it was put out too close, I think, to the holidays, a lot of people just weren't paying attention. And so, we did receive some requests, you know, if we could allow more time, and so we did extend the time on it. And then we did receive the two proposals, as Jeff mentioned. Both proposals were very good proposals. The local proposal was very good as well. However, the local proposer just didn't have any relative experience in this area. And so, the criteria required someone to have experience with developing a reparations, excuse me, program. And the local proposer had a very good plan to move it forward, but did not have the relative So, we went through the evaluation process. We had an evaluation committee that evaluated the proposals, scored the proposals. We did an interview with the firm, the one firm, met with them extensively, asked them a lot of really good questions, and then moved forward to make the recommendation for the selection.
Thank you. And who constituted or who was on the committee to rate the proposal? City staff, or what are their roles?
Yes, it was three city, high-ranking city staff members. We had a representative from the legal office, a representative from the city manager's office, and the city clerk's office.
Thank you. And these, whenever the city goes out to bid on a project, it's protected by state law, and there's a lot of rules that we have to follow, and, you know, council isn't involved. So, can, we followed all of those rules in this case.
Correct.
And I should point out, I believe I heard a comment made about the fact that the proposals were not available to the public. Our normal process, as well as most public agencies' process, is until the item is being presented to council for, for final award, the proposals are not made available, because that would impact the ability of the city to negotiate with a proposal.
Thank you for clarifying that. The city council doesn't typically see proposals until it's presented as a package to us.
Correct.
So, as not to influence the decision. Thank you. And then, so you said that the, in this RFP, the consultants will go through and, and collect histories, and listen to oral histories, and review all the history and data and information that's out there. So, we got some public comments disputing facts that are in the historical context statement, and survey, and other city documents. So, that is the work that this consultant would do, correct?
Yes, they have, the majority of their staff are researchers. They are excellent, expert researchers, and that's a big part of this, is to find the facts. And so, it won't just be, you know, taking information from people affected, it's going to be taking information from the entire community, and whatever's available. And I've spoken to a lot of these people that spoke today, and I've reminded them, they will be an important part of the process as well. And if they have facts and information to share, that will also be included in this process. It is a fact-finding process to start with.
So, people who are concerned about some facts that might be incorrect, or something like that, in the scope of work, or in the request for proposals, the consultant wouldn't be biased by that information, because they would go on a full fact-finding mission to collect that information?
Correct. And the, the misinformation that you've heard about, that they talk about in the proposal, is really just some information that was in a staff report. And the staff report was included in the RFP for information, so they could understand where we'd been, and what we had discussed in open forum. So, that information that's being disputed was out of a staff report.
Thank you. And obviously, staff, I've been working with staff on this for a long time, as many of us have, and everyone's doing their best to put together accurate information. But the problem is that the information is not collected in one place. And so, because we haven't done this work, you know, anyone's going to be able to find disagreements with some of the facts. And that's the value of doing this work, for our community to really fill in Palm Springs' history that is, has been missing, or has been untold.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any, Councilmember DeHart?
Yeah, Jeff, I appreciate getting that background and, on where everything stands in the claims. And I think that was good for the public to be able to, to hear what's before the city also. You know, where I'm challenged with the agreement that came back is, my understanding was more that we were looking at this in two pieces. One, that we were really evaluating the, the impact on the, the depth of that harm, and the breadth of that harm that was caused to people who were identified to be part of, you know, this displacement. And then the other piece is, if there is identified harm, and it's, it's historically documented, we know who it is, we know what it is, we know what the damage is, then there's part two, and that's a reparations program. So, the, what does that program entail? And I think the, the RFP, from many people who've reached out to me and what we heard in tonight, it, it gives an impression that we're doing step two before we're doing step one. And, and I really look at item, the, the directive from the request for proposal from the city that everybody had a chance to bid on, the very second sentence is, is very clear, and it says, "The scope of work will consist on verifying the historical context of the residents displaced from Section 14." And then it goes on and talks about what I view as part two. The scope of work is identified that came from the consultant, is focused on extensive research to document the former residents that lived in the area during the timeframe for when the land was redeveloped. And then we go in in several other points. We talk about vetting the affected residents. We talk about identifying former residents. And, and we know that needs to be done. But I feel like we're, we're missing what I thought we had set out to do, and that was to identify the, the depth of the harm and the individuals that were harmed specifically. So, I, I'm really challenged with the proposal that's before us. And after hearing the comments from our attorney tonight, I'm, I, I really, I, I really question if this proposal, I, I don't see this proposal as being the right approach for us. That's not a question to you, but, yeah.
Thank you. Do we have other comments? Nope, go ahead. Mayor Protam.
All right, then I'm, I'm going to go. Mine are now just comments. And, you know, obviously, there's a very difficult and touchy subject for the community, and really from all parts of it. And, and, you know, I think this is coming up a lot in our country, where there's, certain groups have a history of being treated badly, and, and started when this country first started, Native Americans through slavery, even today, and we're, we're still battling for equality in all forms. And so, the idea of, of making atonement or reparations for people who've been hurt is certainly something that makes a lot of sense, and people of color have probably had it the worst in, in this country. And there's been, there's no question that there's been inequalities and harm done to people. And, and a lot of this goes up to the federal level, you know, and, and, you know, before we had slavery, we didn't have equal rights. And then so, but what's, what I, what's at hand here is specifically the city's role in the wrongdoings, and, and to the residents of Section 14. And, and, you know, while we can try to make amends for our being complicit with national issues, that's, that's not really what I think is, I think it's sort of beyond the scope, and other states are looking at different reparations, and, and it's unfortunate, the, the city didn't look at this a while ago, because obviously, the survivors are getting more elderly. I want to say with no disrespect to anybody, I don't think the RFP was written correctly, because we should have set it up just to an objective historical context in the beginning as one, as one proposal. And I was actually quite excited when I heard that it was Columbia University. I'm a Columbia University graduate. But, but it's, it's for organizations who are effectively advocates for, for reparations. And so, I don't find that they're going to go into this with complete objectivity, although I don't want to question their, their capabilities or their motives, but they obviously see this, this as a, as a need. And, you know, we have a lot of people in our community who have been, were present at the time. I was not here, my family didn't, didn't live here. But, you know, there's other people who have information. And, and there's a certain skews in some of what the proposal was, and that's why I wish it had been part of the, the actual packet, that, but, but they talk about hiring a community researcher, and a community fellow to, to, to get information, but these are from desert Highland Gateway and Section 14 survivors, and they're actually going to pay, out of the $500,000, money to the Section 14 survivors to, to come up with the plan, which doesn't seem to make a lot of legal sense to me, since they're the ones part of the claimants, as I understand, and would be part of the lawsuit. And what I also find, what we're really in need of is to have a real, we've seen this today, and, and I've seen it in many different meetings, that there's a lot of different opinions on this. And, and there's a lot of different facts, and the city is still coming up and finding, you know, new facts. And so, we really do need this in-depth research, so we can make an appropriate recommendations, either on how to repair specifically what we may have been responsible for, and I absolutely think that, you know, if we have direct responsibility, but I also think we have a responsibility for community. And, and, you know, they may have been legally evicted, it may not have been our property, but there were different areas of the city that were not treated well when they had to go there. I know we talked to one person who was able to buy a home, and that's great, but a lot of people were redlined, they couldn't get loans. And, you know, and no matter what path we take in this, some people can be unhappy. And obviously, the city cannot afford a $2 billion payment, because there wouldn't be a city. But I think everybody, the agreement that everybody can make is that they want the facts heard. And I've heard that, actually, that was universal from everybody who spoke today and as everybody spoke. Now, they may have a different view of what they think the facts are, but they all want the facts to be heard. And I, I do not think that this proposal, as it was actually requested, and certainly not as it's been responded, is coming up with really just historical context and objective facts about what happened. And it's going to lead, as Councilmember DeHart said, to the second collision, is how to make reparations for this. And, and I would like to come up with something that actually works, you know? I don't, this is not something that I want to drag out forever. And I certainly think that if we're going to get researchers to help, there's a lot of universities out there, where there's people who are interested in doing objective research. I don't know how we reach them, I don't think they're looking at Planet Bids. So, I don't, and no disrespect to anybody, again, it's just hard to reach people who might have expertise in this. But that's something that we really should try to do. And I think we should be clear, this is an objective research into the, the historical context, and separate and apart from whatever recommendations would then be made. So, it's unfortunate that it was done this way. I don't, I want to keep moving forward, but I don't believe that this organization is the right one to, to lead us down this, the path where we, where we want to go, where we'll come up with a really good solution that, that works best for the entire city, especially for the ones who have been, been harmed, but also for the entire city. And our duty as, as council members is to all the residents, certainly the ones who have been, were, you know, lost their homes and, and were discriminated against, but also all the residents of the city who will have to be part of this reparations process. So, my, my view is that we need to go back and find an independent person to do the historical context, and, and then we, these people, the, a lot of these organizations that are part of this group here seem to be great at working with municipalities, and working on, on actual reparations programs, and different options for that. And that, that part might be better. But until we have the actual historical facts and research out, I don't think that we should be starting to talk to an organization that really advocates for, for reparations at this point. I, it, it's unfortunate, because I thought this was something where we would have a decision tonight before this came out, and be able to move forward with a really good, robust program, but I, I don't think that's what the case right is, that will be fair and equitable.
We have Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you. I as well struggle with this, and I will not be able to vote to move this forward. I concur with the remarks of Councilmember DeHart and Mayor Protam Bernstein. I think we do need to have fact-finding, and we then need to have a discussion of those facts. The fact-finder needs to be individuals that are broadly perceived by the local community as being individuals that can deliver to us a report of the facts that is not motivated by their advocacy in any fashion, and that is truly one that records for us the facts. I am not optimistic that we will get to a point in time where there will be universal consensus in our city as to what happened. So, many individuals experienced those events very differently, and we are looking back 60 years plus in terms of what happened. But one of the things that we do need to have is a degree of consensus among those of us on council as to what the facts are, and very specifically, what the facts are in terms of the specific responsibility for harms inflicted by the city of Palm Springs. And I appreciate that within the historical context, there were many, many harms. But I have a fiduciary responsibility to the city of Palm Springs and to the people in the city of Palm Springs. And I can feel very comfortable in standing in front of the public and saying, "We did this wrong, and we have an obligation to make amends for what we did wrong." But I think we have to have consensus as to what it was specifically that we did wrong. And I don't believe we had that consensus today. We have achieved consensus that there were wrongs performed by the city of Palm Springs. Our apology was given because we did have, and we, I believe we continue to have consensus that there were things that we should not have done, but as to what those acts were, we're not to that point. So, and I, that's going to be a very difficult conversation for us to have, but it is one that we must have first, before we can move forward to design a program or understand the economic implications of what our future responsibility should be. Evictions, as was noted earlier this evening, are never, never easy, and they are always heart-wrenching. And as we have heard from testimony, evictions and their consequences can wreck havoc for people's lives, not just simply that we're immediately affected, but down through the generations. So, no one should ever do this lightly. We need to understand fully the historical record as to what happened, and I would remind everyone. And I would remind everyone that nothing happened here until there was an act of Congress that gave back to the Aguacaliente people control of their land and their ability to make the determination as to what was going to happen on their land, most particularly their most sacred land contained within Section 14. And the Aguacaliente tribe of Coi Indians, over the course of over a half a century, have demonstrated that they in fact have, should, and must always be responsible for their land, and the value of that land is theirs and theirs alone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember DeHart, do you still have a comment?
Yeah, I neglected to mention for people who haven't followed the subject for some time, I'm certainly, I'm an advocate for the residents and the survivors and the descendants. And my concern tonight that I'm expressing is based on the fact that we have acknowledged some wrongs, we have acknowledged that the city had a role, and we apologized. But to take it to the next step now, we have to have a thorough assessment of the harms that were done and clearly identifying the individuals, the property, the impact of that destruction. And that's where I'm not getting to that point with this consultant agreement tonight. So I will not be able to support the agreement.
Thank you. So at this time, what I'm hearing from council is that there's a need to go back out for, put the RFP back out with a, in an amended state to better reflect what we're discussing right now, which is step one, a more, more historical research on what actually occurred before you move into another phase. That's what I'm hearing from the majority of council. Are there any comments on that? And if that's accurate, then I would ask that staff go back and amend the RFP, share with council that RFP for approval before it goes back out. Councilmember Holstich, did you have something to add?
Okay. Sorry, it's a little mind-boggling to me because that was part of the scope, that's what I'm struggling with. It's in 1.2D. The first thing we asked them to do was to look at the historical context. Now, the reason why we didn't ask them to do it from scratch is because there's so much information that's already out there that we're providing them, and by not having them do it from scratch was saving the city money. So the idea was take the information that's out there everywhere, all of these, this information, stuff that's been found, historical records that have been found, and research that and determine what the facts are. That is step number one. I just want to make sure, before we say do-over, that you understand that that is the first step in the process. And you could say to them at that point, stop, that's enough. We've seen the facts, we don't need you to do anything else. So I guess I just don't, I want to make sure that you know what your, all your options are, because I think there's a lot of thinking that they, they're not doing that. That is the biggest part of their scope, is to do that. And I get the concept totally that someone who advocates for this could not be objective, because it's one of the first comments that I made to Mr. Ballinger when the proposals came in. However, when we interviewed these people, that is not how this came across at all from these professional researchers. They are looking for the facts. Once they have the facts, and only if the council is comfortable, would they move forward with any recommendations.
Thank you. Can we just have City Attorney Ballinger, can you speak a little bit about this process and what exactly this contract will detail so that we can determine if there is interest from the council in moving forward? Because I think there, based on what we're hearing right now, I think there is some confusion.
Yeah, I think Ms. Baker is correct that the RFP did ask for, you know, contextual investigation into the history. What I'm hearing from the council, at least a majority of the council, is that there's a perception that perhaps because of the advocacy aspect of this proposer, that that may affect their ability to really objectively do an investigation of the type that the council is looking for. And so I think I'm hearing that the council wants to put this out for another request for proposal and make it really clear to the universe of potential proposers that the council is looking for a very objective analysis of the history, and then will undertake a look at potential reparations programs. And if that's actually what the council is looking to do, I would ask the council if, because I think I heard at least one council member suggest that maybe we just have one person do this contextual investigation and then have maybe another consultant or group help the city with the second part, which is developing the reparations program. So if that's of interest to the council, it'd be helpful for us to have that direction given. Or if you want us to do both, then we can certainly do that.
Mayor Protem.
Say, I think that is probably close to what I, to what I think is that I understand that it was the first part of the RFP, but it's also in the RFP, it says, "and develop a reparations program." So I think the people who are, by definition, going into doing the research are people who understand reparations programs, which a historical researcher may not be able to do at all. And so that's where I think the confusion comes in, is that it wasn't, and again, this wasn't that I'm saying it was badly written, we should have separated it just to do the historical research, because, I mean, you know, the, we have survivors, we have a lot of records, the city's found its records, I mean, there are different people who have different points of view, who have records, the Historical Society has records. And really, what we want to do is get that, that research done, and then council can come, and we may decide that, you know what, we can see exactly what we should do here, we can, we don't need someone to come with the next part, although these people are experts and they can certainly help. But I think that's how we should do it, and separate it, and make a concerted effort to find people who are just historical archivists. Not that these people aren't, but they also are reparations advocates. So let's find somebody who is just, who, are there other people who are just historical archivists that could help us do this research so that we have the facts? And again, I agree with Councilmember DeHart, we want to, you know, we want to make amends, we want to make this right, we just want to do it in a way that is thoughtful and accurate for both the survivors and the city.
Just one comment on that. I think, you know, you can have someone research and present the factual information as they see it, but you still need analysis beyond that, right? It's not just here are the facts, we need to have a context of those facts, we need to be understanding the history of our nation in terms of race relations and racism and segregation and redlining, there's a lot more that goes into it than simply presenting a historic account of what happened. So I am concerned that we can't be separating out these things too much, because then we're actually losing the focus of what we're trying to achieve. I'm certainly, I want council to be on the same page in terms of what we're doing on this process, especially this first step, I think that's very important. So I am interested in finding out if, what we can do to either amend this contract to move forward, or if, I think I'm hearing that maybe this is just not the right group for the majority of the council, and if that's the case, then, then again, adjusting the RFP and moving forward in a different way. But I do want to just state for the record that I do think we need to make sure that we are not separating out things too much.
And just to clarify, I do, it's not just straight facts, it's just, it is historical context, but it's separate, it is separate and apart from making the recommendation on what to do with that.
Understood.
So that's what I was, thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. So, looking at the scope of work, and I was trying to follow along with the council members about which was objectionable, I know you, Councilmember DeHart, read out parts of the scope of work. So on page 17, for, it's under 1.2 scope, under the scope of work is primarily what we're looking at. So as you noted, D is historical context, so I've circled that, because I think I heard a majority of council saying we want historical context research done. And then I'm looking to see, you know, like E is research, vetting of effective residents of Section 14, that might be what was described as Phase 2, I'm not sure. So I'm just wondering if we can look through this list and see what we might want to be included in the scope of work, just for the public. Councils don't usually work on the scope of work, right? This didn't come before us, and so we don't have an opportunity to work on this in a public way because of the RFP process. We had worked on the scope, but this was unique and it had come before us. Can you remind this council, because we've also had change of council members throughout this process?
Correct. This one was unique because we knew the sensitivities of it, and we wanted to get it right. So we, this is like, in the two years I've been here, the only time we've ever gone through this with council members, but we actually did go through this with the past council, to develop this scope of work in this manner. Every word mattered, and we spent a lot of time on it.
Thank you. And if I could, because I just want to state, and it's so hard to serve in this role, because we have to represent Palm Springs now, and we're representing our districts, all of us are districted, so we're representing our district now, and we're representing all of Palm Springs, and we're also representing the agency. And so I think it's undisputed that the agency, the city of Palm Springs, had a role to play in forced evictions and removals of people, especially people of color, in Section 14 in the 60s, and that that had ongoing effects on those communities, especially because of redlining and limitations and discrimination, racial discrimination of where people could go. So just to be clear about where we've been, because it does feel, I'm getting some messages like, didn't we already do some of this? Haven't we already decided this as a city? And so I appreciate and I'll be respectful that we have a new council and you have to come into this partway, and you deserve a voice, and we want to have consensus, definitely. But the council did vote to support reparations program. We've had extended conversations about that. We issued an apology, so we've admitted wrongdoing on part of the city for whatever that involvement was. I agree that I want the full historical record. I think it's an important part of California history and this regional history, and I very much would like to see it documented. I'd love to see those oral histories collected. I think that we'll be looking back 50 years, 100 years, and telling this story as part of California history, a dark period of California history. So I just say that to say, I don't, we don't, our residents who are sitting here watching us debate this don't deserve us to try to relitigate this. We've extended numerous hours of staff time and public's time doing this, and I just don't want to move backwards. And that's what you're saying, is the council had already, this council, not this current one, but the City Council of Palm Springs had looked at the scope and approved it. And so here we are. So I think if we could just, I know we have also Columbia on the line. If I could hear from them, because...
She's dying to speak.
I would very much like to hear from the professional who does this, she's heard the concerns from council about objectivity and neutrality and how to get a historical basis and the phases of this, and I'd love to just hear from her if she has a response. I will note that, just to be clear, the scope, the RFP and the agreement has a 30-day termination clause for any reason, right? So the city could engage and then say, actually, we think this is coming from a biased place, or we don't think that, we think this is advocacy on behalf of the survivors that we didn't want, we wanted a more objective process, we could cancel the contract at any time, right?
Yes, you could.
Okay, can we just hear from her, please?
Can, staff, can we bring Linda Mann into the room?
What's her title, is she professor, or what do we?
She is a professor, she's considered the project manager for this project, but she's a professor.
Welcome, Linda, are you live with the city council, are you here?
I am.
Thank you. Good evening, Professor. I'm hoping if you could just take a few moments to respond to some of the concerns that you've heard from city council tonight.
Yes, of course. And first of all, I just want to state that I recognize the, I'm listening to all of you, for, let me just start with that, I'm listening to each and everyone's concerns. And I think that it's really important that you know that the work that we do is not exempt of anybody's voices. If anything, what we do is we engage with all stakeholders within a community in which they are looking at reconciling their history. And I want to reiterate that the research, again, leads our work, and that we are open to any and all historical information from the community as well. There are no prepackaged solutions at all. And one of the comments, let me just say that archival and historical research is really our expertise. It's interesting, we had already kind of done some background work. I don't know if anybody's gone to the National Archives and Records and Administration in DC, but it's a place we've already started to actually kind of take a peek, because the Bureau of Indian Affairs is there. And certainly a place where the documentation needs to be researched to better understand how this was situated within the historical context of what was occurring at the time. So due diligence is at the forefront of everything we do. Again, I want to reiterate, there's no prepackaged solution. And I think one thing I would like to just kind of clear up is that in these processes, there's a sense that we are advocates of reparations. And I think the concern is that there's a judicial piece of this or non-judicial mechanisms. We really look at creating a through line between the historical context and what occurred, and looking at the impact and beginning to explore ways of reconciliation and repair. But that doesn't mean that, you know, I think it's feeling as if reparations is this framework that would be not, not good for the city, it would be amazing for the community. There are actually five categories in which we look at for reparations that are within an international human rights framework, and you've already embarked on one of them. Satisfaction. Satisfaction is within the framework, and it's an apology or an acknowledgement that this happened. It's, you know, it's, it's, there's five categories of different types of repair. It can be rehabilitation, it can be truth-telling, where people and communities gather together to understand the history as a community. So I just, I'm not sure the propensity, the feeling that we have a bias towards reparations, I would say we have a through line in which we look at history, the research, the historical context, and then look at the impact, and then think about ways to move forward in a community. What are the ways that a community can move forward that is healing for all parties and creates a space of reconciliation? And if you separate those, oftentimes it does not result in meaningful repair. Obviously, you can go through this process as you wish. I would say to you that whatever research process that you explore, this piece of the history is not going to go away. It's something that needs to be further investigated and further understood and... It's something that needs to be further investigated and further understood and, and done in the spirit of community and working alongside all stakeholders to develop a better understanding for the public, to better, make a better understanding for the descendants and those who were removed from Section fourteen, and to understand the process of how a community can go forward in the context of these histories and this past. So I don't know if that answers your questions in regards to this propensity or bias towards reparations, but reparations is really a process of transition and transformation. And it can be done in many different modalities, but it is always a thorough line from historical research analysis, impact analysis, and then exploring avenues of repair in collaboration with all stakeholders.
Thank you. And if I could ask you another question. So as we're looking at this scope and we have what's proposed as a twelve-month program, so could you just talk a little bit about maybe the phases of the project? And so what would be first? What would be second? What would be those early stages? The city council's looking at the scope of work to see what we might want, what the majority might want included and not included yet.
Yeah, the entire first section is completely focused on historical analysis, vetting, and research. So everything about the forefront is going to be going to the archives, as I shared, going to the archives, going to, to Los Angeles. We know that there's documentation there we'd like to be looking at. Going to legacy institutions that exist in the city of Palm Springs. Meeting with individuals who are, who are descendants or who were removed to understand their histories and do the oral histories. So the entire first section is completely focused on that aspect. And then following that, the work that we do often looks at the impact. Now, the impact is not strictly compensatory. We look at what is known as the social determinants of health. So this second piece of the work really looks at, you know, the outcomes in education, in health, in economics, the loss for community, those types of ways in which there may be an impact.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, and then the last piece would just be policy recommendations. Again, the RFP very specifically states that we would be only making recommendations, and it will really be up to the city council to determine whether any of those policies are policies you act upon or not. I will say upfront also, as noted, there's a significant piece of community engagement. So creating public dialogue among all of the stakeholders, like I said, the city, the Section fourteen members, but also the general public, so that there's a better public understanding of this history.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from council? Or any recommendations for moving forward? Is there interest from council in moving forward on that initial phase that was just described? Councilmember Middleton.
I would like to move forward with fact-finding, but as said previously, I believe we need to reissue the RFP and engage with an opportunity to find fact-finders that do not also have an advocacy role.
Thank you. I'm seeing nods from the other council members that are in the majority on this item. Question for staff, what information do you need from us tonight in order for us to move this item forward in another, with another RFP?
So I think it might be helpful, again, if we get clear direction from the council, if you want staff to bifurcate the kind of investigatory phase from the recommendatory phase.
I'm seeing three yeses on that, so I think you've got that. And what additional information would you, would you need from us, if any? Kim, do you need any?
I don't think so.
Okay, is there any final comments from council? Okay, councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. I think I'll be disappointed if I don't comment, even though I'm emotional. You know, I just want to say I'm disappointed in this outcome. The city council, for the city of Palm Springs, issued an apology. We apologize for our role. We know that there was wrongdoing, and the city council majority of it said that we wanted to do a reparations program. And so, and we know the urgency as so many other residents are aging and starting a whole, we put out this RFP November twenty twenty-two. We're almost six months out. It's just adding many, many months to this process. I would have loved to, so I object to this result. I would very much like to see us move forward. The applicant is very qualified. You're not going to find someone who is involved in this work who's going to be qualified, who's not an advocate. This is a professor. They're highly qualified to do that. And so I appreciate the council saying that they're going to do a historical context in a Phase One. I'm concerned there's not majority support for a Phase Two, and so I hope that we'll get there. I would love to hear more and learn more from the professor who's talked about not being able to decouple his history from reparations and making meaningful efforts. Heard from the community again and again that apology isn't sufficient, and actually it's harmful to apologize and not take actual action because the apology falls false. So I just have to say that. So for those reasons, I'll be voting no on this motion.
At this time, I don't think we need a motion.
Can I add one comment?
Mayor Protam.
So I just want to, just to clarify, councilmember Holstich, I do think that there should be some form of reparation for what the city did. So I'm not disagreeing with that, but we go from what could be a $2 billion cash payout to, you know, to somehow giving housing subsidies. So that's why I think it's, 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 I do, I do think we need to go forward, step forward, but an advocacy group, I don't think will be as objective in going through the historical context. And I would like to know, because we may find the city is not liable for a lot of things, you know, for that much, but we may want to do more than that, sorry, we may want to do more than that for the community that suffered, as the mayor said, from what would be, you know, racism in our country overall, that may not have been as a result of our specific actions. So that's where I come out, and I, and I don't, I don't want to make it, I don't want to seem like I don't want to do any reparations or make good for what the city, make good for the wrongs the city did. I do, but I want to have the historical context done in a, in a better fashion.
Thank you. So I am told that we do need to have a motion and a second and a vote on this item, so I would ask that folks that are in the majority or someone else make that motion.
And if, if the council would like me to articulate that, it would be to not approve the proposed agreement, but instead direct staff to reissue a request for proposals for the Phase One investigatory portion.
Thank you. And so just for the record as well, I think that this process is taking too long, and I'm not convinced that even spending twelve months, which was what was in this proposal, would actually change the result of what we would ultimately do. And so I am very concerned that this will continue to go on and on and never actually be resolved. And I do think that the, what we had in front of us was sufficient and could be modified for us to move forward instead of delaying the process. All right, we have a motion, a motion and a second, so we can all vote now.
Madam Mayor.
Mayor, Mayor, Councilmember Middleton.
Question, on our screen, it's saying motion to approve. Is that motion to approve as outlined by?
Yes, motion to approve as outlined by the city attorney, which is to not move forward with this contract at this time and to send it back out for RFP.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Right, but we clarified the motion just now. Yes. All right, so motion passes to not approve this, this particular contract and to go out for RFP. And at this time, we will take a quick five-minute break, and we will be back at, oh, I guess, eight thirty-five. So I want to go ahead and get started on our next item. The next item on the agenda is item three B, to approve additional funding in the amount of $3 million for development and construction of the ALO Palm Canyon Project located at 1479 North Palm Canyon Drive, a seventy-one-unit senior housing project in the city of Palm Springs. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam and councilmembers, Jay Verata, Director of Community and Economic Development.
Jay Verata, Director of Community and Economic Development. Tonight, you're being asked to consider a request from the developer to provide an additional $3 million of financial assistance to the Aloe Palm Canyon project. You will recall, this project is located at the southwest corner of North Palm Canyon and Stevens Road and is for the development of 71 affordable senior housing units, including 25 permanent supportive units. Our developer representative is also here in the audience tonight. If you would like to ask questions. Later in this presentation, I would like to point out that the agreement currently provides a developer with land valued at 1.4 million and financial assistance in the amount of 2.6, rather, $2,604,300, of which $2 million is state-grant HHAP funds and $400,000 is former redevelopment agency housing funds. So neither of these are general fund and can only be spent for affordable housing or homelessness. There are several factors that have led to this situation. As you can imagine, affordable housing development in this day and age is probably more complex and involved with moving parts and changing circumstances than it's ever been. One of those being that contracts for construction work were bid at the height of the lumber crisis. The global supply disruptions related to switchgear, increased material costs, and extended construction have extended construction timelines. Construction loan interest rates have increased from 3.9% to 7.75%. And interest rates have also contributed to increase in costs. The developer, West Hollywood Community Housing Corporation, was able to reduce project costs by $3.5 million through value engineering. They have also secured additional funding commitments from other sources, which includes additional project-based vouchers from the county of Riverside, permanent local housing allocation, also from the county of Riverside in the amount of $3 million. But this still leaves a funding gap of $3 million that they are requesting from the city of Palm Springs. It's important to note that the developer has applied for other sources of primary funding. The primary funding being the largest single source of funding, which includes applications for 9% tax credits and 4% tax credit funding. However, the level of competition for affordable housing is highly competitive. In fact, in the latest round of applications for just the Inland Empire region, seven out of nine project applications received a perfect score of 120. And only one of the seven projects was awarded tax credit funding. The Aloe project scored 119, meaning it would still have to compete with the other six projects for future tax funding. Without the additional funding from the city, this project would most likely have to reapply for all the funding, approximately $40 million it has already secured to be invested in Palm Springs for affordable housing and permanent supportive housing. In regards to outreach, our agreement with the developer requires that they provide a marketing plan, more particularly to comply with affirmative fair housing requirements. Advertisements will be included, will include prominent use of the Equal Housing Opportunities logo, slogans, and statements to affirmatively market the units. The marketing will be focused on income-qualified, appropriately-sized renter households, especially those who are least likely to apply. Flyers will be distributed to social service agencies, community centers, libraries, housing, including Mizell and Heritage Senior Care, noting this is a senior affordable housing project. Advertisements will be placed in local newspapers, such as Desert Sun, Palm Springs Post, El Infidor de Valle. And in addition, as we mentioned during our presentation with the residential rehab program, we will provide presentations and disseminate information with One PS, promote the availability of the units on the city's social networks and website, and have information available at public counters regarding the availability of the units. We'll also work closely with our agency partners, such as Jewish Family Services, Senior Advocates, and Habitat for Humanity for referrals of households in need. And again, the developer is here to help answer questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have Councilmember Hart has a question? Go ahead.
Thank you for that, Jay. Where's the, can you share with the public where this $3 million is coming from?
Yes. In the current year's budget, the city council had allocated $10 million for affordable housing. So it's proposed that this $3 million would come out of that $10 million that was approved in the budget. It's called the Affordable Housing Set Aside. That would be used to assist this project.
And what, how is the, how are residents selected? How does somebody get picked to?
I'm going to ask the developer to come and help out, but I can tell you, there is qualifications based on income. And the income levels vary. Some of them are considered to be very low at 20% of the area median income. And it goes all the way up to 80% of the area median income. So it is varied in that sense. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Jay. So, we do have a tenant selection plan that, you know, worked with the local agencies. And that the key is to make sure that it obligates and satisfies all fair housing laws. And if there is a priority to house local residents, one of the ways you can move forward with that is consulting with a fair housing attorney. And they can review your marketing and outreach plan to see if there's, if it's consistent with all the fair housing laws. The city of Santa Monica has also, you know, elected to have their own waiting list. And that allows them to control the application process and, you know, focus on the marketing component. So, you know, for us, we just want to make sure we're abiding by all fair housing laws. The way we distribute and market the plan is, you know, incorporated with the local nonprofits we're working with. So we're working with Mizell and Heritage Senior Care in the city of Palm Springs. And we would have flyers that would, you know, be circulated at, you know, other nonprofit agencies, but schools, as well as where, areas where seniors might congregate, like public libraries. We would also, you know, provide advertisements in newspapers and then social media. Maybe Nextdoor is an option, or Facebook. So that's something that gets sorted out as we move forward with the marketing and Lisa process.
Thank you.
Councilmember Middleton, did you have something?
Thank you. I'm looking at the cost of this project. And if I'm reading the large number correctly, it's $44 million at this point that's being estimated. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And does that include the value of the land that was given to West Hollywood?
That's correct. So it's identified as a use, which is the cost, and as well as a source that's provided by the city of Palm Springs.
So, my quick math is that's $571,000 for each one-bedroom unit in a multifamily home. If you were in the private market and you spent $571,000 to build a one-bedroom apartment, you'd be out of business very quickly. Why does it cost so much more money to build affordable housing?
So, one of the challenges affordable housing developers face is that because we are typically provided public funding for most of our projects, we have to use higher wages for the labor of the project. It's usually agreement with all the union trades that are associated with the local jurisdiction. But we're paying residential prevailing wages on this project. And that's an average of about 10% to 15% on the construction costs. In addition, you know, we're working with more extended timelines. So our pre-development costs are typically longer than what a market-rate developer would typically use. We try to, you know, make the numbers work as much as possible. Like, we're not incurring any additional developer fee, even though our project increased in budget. But, you know, there's only so many things we can do. So we did reduce the construction budget by 3.5 million with still keeping the integrity of the design intact. But there's just a lot of issues outside of our control. And so, it's challenging as affordable housing developer. And it is true that the costs are a little higher than market rate. But I don't know if it's that much higher in this current climate.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Councilmember Holstage.
Thank you. Actually, don't think we've had any market-rate apartments built in this city for a long time, right? And so the problem is that it's not penciling on the market side. Coachella Valley Housing Coalition and, sorry, not Coachella Valley Housing Coalition, the Building Association tracks how many permits are pulled in the Coachella Valley for apartment, apartments. And it's very, very few. And so that's a significant issue we need to address, just the cost of building housing overall. Thank you so much for this project. Thank you for being here. Sorry that it's probably pretty late for you, as you probably drove in. I, great work on this project. I know it's a difficult time. We've had a number of private luxury development projects, like hotel projects, go under or claim that they can't continue because of the pandemic. And you've carried on even with all of these increased costs. And we know that we're subsidizing affordable housing for 55 years and longer, hopefully, in this city. And that's so valuable to us. So thank you, and especially to our residents. I had a question about permanent supportive housing. So I know that you have, so either to Jay or to you, to the developer. I see that you're doing low-income, very low-income. And I know we're trying to balance our arena needs for the public, our regional housing needs allocation of the number of units we have to develop. And you have 25 permanent supportive housing for people who are exiting homelessness with supportive services. So, I got a question from the public about if the city's providing 3 million more, if there's, you know, and you're probably pretty far along in this project to be reallocating units. But I did get a question of the city's allocating more dollars. Is there other benefits to the city other than all these units that we so desperately need? You know, are there, is there a consideration of doing more permanent supportive housing units on the project itself? Since we keep hearing, we just had a meeting with the county today. I know you've been working closely with the county, but we heard that's the biggest need for the throughput so people have housing at the end of the day, knowing that the city is developing a navigation center and we need to place those people in permanent housing.
Sure. So, I think, you know, there's always trade-offs. And you can focus completely on permanent supportive housing, but at the expense of low-income housing households. And, you know, part of the challenge is that if you don't provide housing for these residents, then they're also in jeopardy of losing their homes and then becoming homeless as well. And so, we like to have a broad range of residents, especially, this is our first project in Palm Springs. And so we want to make sure that we're providing adequate services and programming needs. A third of our overall portfolio is for senior housing. And we provide resident services for senior households that are low-income eligible. So, we wanted to make sure that we offer those services. And if it's all permanent supportive housing, we wouldn't be able to be the service provider. We'd have to outsource those services either to the county of Riverside Behavioral Health, excuse me, University of Riverside Behavioral Health, or the AIDS Adaptive Project.
Thank you. So how'd you decide on this unit mix as you've gone along?
I mean, a lot of it was driven, you know, through the year or so of community outreach we did. And, you know, we saw the need from the residents and local stakeholders that we need housing in general and especially for the low-income seniors who are at jeopardy of losing their homes.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I remember meeting with your organization when you first were considering coming to Palm Springs and expanding into our city to develop affordable housing, especially for low-income seniors. So, so proud to support this. And I think this shows that the city of Palm Springs will do whatever it takes. And we're supportive of building more affordable housing in this city. And thank you so much for bringing it to us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, just some questions. So, is the Riverside County 3 million a matching grant to ours?
Yes. It was part of the negotiation. We've been working with Mike Walsh since December of last year, knowing that there is a, there is a pretty sizable gap. And, you know, he committed to matching whatever the city of Palm Springs could provide to the table to make sure that this project moves forward.
Great. And it is amazing that you're still moving forward. So I'm very, very happy. It's a great project. If, and if we said no, what is reality for what would happen?
Well, it's a very good question. So, you know, this project wouldn't move forward right now because we would, instead of a 3 million deficit, we do have a $6 million deficit. In addition, we would lose the 19 million from the state's accelerator fund. They have a strict timeline to close a project by June 26. And if we don't make that timeline, those funds will be reallocated elsewhere. And then we're, so we're essentially back at square one, where, you know, I think, you know, we've contemplated whether or not this project would move forward at all. It's really, you know, driven a lot because of Jay and Ariel and Scott Stiles. So I really, you know, thank you for your patience and your generosity.
But, but if we say yes today, then it looks like by really two years from today, there would be people in there.
Absolutely. Yes.
And just to clarify, because it's, we're giving 3 million, but the document from city manager is classified as a loan. So could you, or someone explain for the public how that is?
Right. I mentioned the other financial assistance we have going towards this project. And that too is structured as a residual receipts loan. So, that means the payments are only due if the project generates essentially a net profit or enough revenue to make the debt service payments. So, I believe that's also, had this been a tax credit project, that would have been one of the requirements, that it's a loan. So it's structured in that way. Plus, it gives the city a little more leverage in terms of being able to make requests on the project and developer, say, maintenance, et cetera. Although, most of our developers have been very good with being responsible. But the challenge with that is, that's a loan that would be behind
All right, yeah.
$35 million.
Okay. So, and I know Councilmember Middleton was saying this is 576,000. But for the city's investment, it's 100,000 a unit? Is that basically what we're paying?
Yeah, it looks like it's about 100,000 per unit from the city's perspective.
Okay. And if we are giving this amount of money, this falls under now our community workforce agreement?
Jeff, are affordable exempt?
Even if it's our money?
Correct.
Okay.
It will, yes.
Okay. And in terms of what we can do in terms of local preference? So we can go to our local agencies? Can we have real local preference? Or is this just the, through the marketing?
We can certainly do marketing. And as I have advised the council in the past, I think that the council could indicate preferences for local residents and have that type I think that the council could indicate preferences for local residents and have that type of a preference list, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, I certainly think that's, that's what we should do in this project. And I think we've seen other projects, I mean, obviously, you could work with MIZEL, and we have other organizations out, out here that are probably great for finding, finding people who, who would use this, who would need this. So, I'd like to add that local preference in there to whatever we can do legally, and ensure also the marketing. And then lastly, ensure that we actually have somebody who helps people apply. I know we have done this before with the marketing. I brought this up with the Monarch Apartments, but it's not always easy to apply once you do it, especially when you're talking about people who make, you know, 0% to, to 20% of median income. And, but I do fully, I mean, I do support this. I want to move forward. And, and is two months enough time to close?
More time would be helpful, but we can make it work.
Okay. Okay. So, I would like to have this, you know, a real marketing plan come back on this, and how we can get our local preference in there, get our Palm Springs residents, especially since we're now investing more money on it. But I do like this project, and I'm glad you brought this, and I can't wait to see it open.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton, did you have an additional comment?
Just a couple of comments. Thank you. And I support my colleagues very strongly when it comes to local preference. We're spending $100,000 per unit. We're doing so because we want our residents that are at risk to get homes. And I as well will be supporting this project. I'm reasonably satisfied that West Hollywood is one of the stronger affordable housing development programs and has done a better job than some others in controlling internal costs on the program, and that should be rewarded. And the need for these homes is so incredible. So, I want to support this. But as we move forward, if we are going to achieve the kinds of goals that we have set for ourselves when it comes to affordable housing, we're going to need to look at how much we can deconstruct this model of cost when it comes to building affordable housing, or we will never have the finances to catch up with the need.
Thank you. We have one more comment from Mayor Protam, and we also just want to note that we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Oh, sorry.
You can still speak.
So, my question, how much is left of our 10 million after this? You haven't spent it on anything else?
This would be the only commitment we have on those funds.
Okay. So, the only other thing I want to raise is that we did keep, have, talking about a portion of our affordable, of our TOT, vacation rental, to come, to go towards affordable housing. Somehow, it keeps disappearing from our agenda. I would like to see that come back, because we're going to have these projects, and we don't, you know, we're going into budget season. It'd be nice to know that we could have a continuation of funds for affordable housing, which is going to be quite expensive. And I think that would be a non-controversial thing from council, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton, our Hostage.
Thank you. I agree with those comments. So, thank you. I look forward to that going forward. Thank you for continuing to advocate for that. And I just wanted to raise for council and staff to lift to rise, and the County of Riverside is doing a loan loss reserve program where they're holding funds and then loaning them out to affordable housing developers or anyone doing affordable housing. And they're trying to fill in the gaps when things like this happen, where, you know, you're, need additional financing to really close those gaps and fund these projects. I did check with them to see if they were available to fund this project to fill your gap, and they said they're not able to. They're extended. But I have asked council publicly, and I'll ask again. I know we're doing a study session on how to spend that now $7 million. And I'd love to see us hold some of that money in this, in this regional for the Coachella Valley loan program for affordable housing, because it's revolving. So, that means if we put $3 million into that fund, they would loan it out multiple, multiple times, and not just use it on one project, but use it on many, many more. It just amplifies the power of our money. So, when we consider that spending, and hopefully, we'll have a money coming into it all the time from our TOT, thanks to Mayor Protam, we can also consider getting information, at least, from Lift to Rise and the County of Riverside and their program. I think it's been pretty successful, but I'd love to get objective information from staff about if that is something we would want to consider. When you do have money, you get requests. This is, we got this one. Now, we got another one. We're going to get more. And I'd love to see ways that we can magnify our, our impact, like you said, Councilmember Middleton, so we really can get to the number of units we need. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all so much. Thank you for being here, and we can now vote on this item. And motion passes to support the $3 million, 5 to 0. The next item on our agenda is our final item, which is the ordinance amending city municipal code to establish permanent limitations on third-party food delivery fees. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. In response to the increase in demand of third-party food delivery services in October of 2020 during the COVID pandemic, the city council enacted Urgency Ordinance Number 2033, which temporarily placed a limit on charges that are imposed by third-party food delivery services on retail food establishments. The point of this ordinance at the time was to promote the use of those services when folks were not able to freely dine at restaurants inside and protect both city residences and local businesses from excessively high fees. That ordinance was set to automatically sunset or expire 90 days following the end of the locally declared emergency, which occurred in February of 2023. Therefore, without further council action, that urgency ordinance is set to expire at the end of May. At the February 21 city council meeting, the council gave direction for the city staff and the city attorney's office to bring back an ordinance permanently establishing the regulations that were in place under the COVID emergency ordinance. And so, that's what we have before you tonight. The ordinance that is before you tonight will impose the following regulations on food delivery service companies. First, it makes it unlawful for those food delivery service companies to charge a restaurant for a delivery fee that's more than 15% of the cost of the purchase order, of the online order. It also makes it unlawful for that delivery service company to charge a retail food establishment any amount that's designated as a delivery fee for an order that it does not involve delivery of food or beverages. It would make it unlawful for a third-party delivery service to charge a retail food establishment more than 5% of the cost of the purchase price for all other fees and charges for other services, for example, that the online service might provide. And it caps those fees at those three points that are listed above. The ordinance would also make it unlawful for a third-party delivery service to charge a customer for a purchase price that's higher than the price that's listed on the menu. It would require that the food delivery services that receive tips provide those tips to the driver and not retain those tips. And then, it also requires the food delivery companies to disclose to the customers each and every fee in an itemized fashion, so that the customer can see exactly what they're paying for. The original ordinance that was put in place during the COVID era provided for a private right of action instead of being enforced by the city. It's similar to kind of what we see under the ADA law, where private citizens or residents are able to bring a private right of action. And it bolsters that remedy by providing prevailing plaintiff is entitled to attorney's fees and costs if they are successful in a case. Subsequent to the posting of the agenda, the city was contacted by at least one of the food delivery services, DoorDash, and DoorDash explained to us that they had introduced a model, a business model, and other, at least one other food delivery service company had established a business model after the COVID ordinances went into effect in 2020, that basically provides for enhanced services that are provided by the food delivery service company to the restaurants that, that select the food delivery service companies. And so, that basically, the 15% is, is charged as a commission by the food delivery service companies to the restaurants for basic food delivery, but that there are enhanced services, such as marketing, enhanced exposure, if the restaurants voluntarily choose to pay a higher commission to, to the food delivery service. And so, what DoorDash is asking is for an exemption to be included in this ordinance for those restaurants that choose to select these enhanced services that are offered by the food delivery service companies. And so, we've provided to the city council an example of that type of ordinance. The city of San Francisco adopted such an ordinance in 2022, following conversations and litigation with DoorDash. And so, we've provided that to the council, should the council wish to, to consider that. I believe a representative on behalf of DoorDash is available tonight. That concludes my presentation. I'm certainly available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Do we have questions from council? Councilmember Middleton?
Yeah, thank you. Jeff, one of the issues that is in our proposed ordinance requires third-party delivery service to disclose to the customer each fee that was charged a retail establishment, as well as any tip paid to the person who's delivering the food. And as I understand it, there is a state ordinance that, or, excuse me, a state statute that covers this area. Is what's being proposed here different than what is in the state statutes? And if so, why do we need to be different?
I'm not exactly sure. I, I'm generally familiar with that requirement. I haven't looked at it specifically, so I don't think I can answer that immediately, but I can look into it and, and try and answer it for you tonight.
I did not give you a warning that I was going to ask that question.
That's okay. It's part of the job.
Ment, but not questions.
If, we can do both at this time. Go ahead.
I think the solution that was worked out by some of these firms with other cities that creates a floor of a 15% rate, but allows restaurants to make a choice to contract with one of the, one or the other or both of the delivery services at a higher fee, is a reasonable compromise and approach. I struggle to understand, once we are past the emergency, why the city should intervene in what is essentially a relationship between a restaurant and a delivery service to define what the maximum fee is going to be that a restaurant can pay. And in talking with some of our local restaurants, they have, they feel that the additional services that they will receive for the additional fees are an appropriate decision for them to make, and one they would like to have the liberty to make.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protam?
Can I just, for historical reference, can we clarify why was this ordinance done?
May I?
One of the legislators, go directly to the legislator. Yes.
Yeah. During the pandemic, we heard from Dean Levine and a number of other business owners through our, I think we, we had many names for all the different roundtables we did during the pandemic to support businesses and workers. But it came directly from businesses and restaurants who identified that they were paying exorbitant fees to these companies at a time where they were closed and had no other options. And so, at least from our, my perspective, having worked on this and having it come forward at that time, it really was a request from our restaurants. I don't know if you want to supplement that from the city staff's perspective?
Yeah, I would say there were reasons in terms of protecting local businesses, as well as protecting customers.
Okay.
And local workers as well. We had heard we wanted to ensure tips went to workers and those types of protections that you see in the ordinance.
Okay. So, I mean, that, that puts a lot of context, because basically, these companies were price gouging at a time that would, people were most, people in our local businesses were most vulnerable. You know, I've, I, I've been on the sites many times, and I know that, you know, we basically, in this country, have what is assembly, just an oligala, oligopoly of, of food delivery services, basically four behemoth services that take care of this all. And so, and I know from being in, having an online business, that the, the threshold is fine, but the truth is that you actually have no exposure if you don't pay the extra fees. And so, that's really where the problem comes in, is that you can say that we'll give it 15%, but unless they pay the 30%. And, and I know some of our big restaurants, that's fine. But for a lot of small restaurants, a lot of the ones that I've spoken to, you know, they don't operate on huge margins. And, you know, I, I find it, I find it, you know, when you have a company like DoorDash that has, has their drivers send out these mass letters about how they're going to be hurt, and DoorDash is a $29 billion company, it just does not ring very well with me. I think their margin, they can get up to 20%, and that seems like a very good margin in a small city like, like ours to be able to do, where we have mostly small businesses, small local businesses. I, I'm sure the McDonald's and the Chipotle's and all these other fast foods that are on the sites are not paying, paying more than 15%, even with their added exposure. So, I actually support the continuation of this, of this ordinance. I think it was done for a reason, and I think if we take it away, then we'll find, then it'll end up only being for big restaurants and fast food. And, and I think that's why it makes sense for to support our local businesses at a time like this. You know, I know that the national chain do negotiate at a national level. I know some of our big business, our local businesses were brought on and guaranteed just the 15% with the added exposure. So, again, there's not really a level playing field for people to negotiate. I don't know how many of these, the DoorDashers or Palm Springs employees. I hope that they're taken care of well. I know there's been different, different issues. But my view is that we need to protect our local businesses to, from gouging, and this is one means to do it. And, and DoorDash has operated successfully, and other ones have operated very successfully for several years now, and it seems to have worked. I mean, they, they're not, they haven't gone out of business. The, the delivery drivers are there. So, this seems to work for me, and I would make a motion to continue it.
Thank you very much. Do you have any additional comments?
I, I did have an answer to Councilmember Middleton's question, if the council would like me to answer it.
Please.
There is a state statute that requires clear itemization of these types of online platforms. That state statute does not preempt local agencies from adopting their own. And I would point out that ours is, is a little bit broader in the sense that it provides a private right of action, whereas I don't see that the state law provides that. And so, ours is a little bit more expansive than the state law. So, there is, there is, would be a reason to do this.
Thank you very much. I do see that there is a motion. Can you clarify your motion, Councilmember DeHart?
Whoops. Thank you. Thank you. That we, we pass the, the ordinance to continue permanent limitations with the additional tier that has been defined in our additional packet material.
Yeah. Can you, I'm sorry, can you clarify that? I'm not sure what that means.
You want it as presented by staff in the staff, in the amended staff report?
So, the 15% cap, and then the option for a business to select paying the higher rate if they choose to do so.
So, similar to the San Francisco model?
Yeah.
So, the compromised position that is present, that is what is presented by staff in the amended staff report, right?
Oh, in the amended, yes.
In the supplemental.
Yes, correct.
The move to approve staff recommendation, or what's in the?
In the amended.
In the amended staff report. Okay. But you made a verbal motion before that, or something that was seen opposite.
Yes, my.
Sorry, Mayor. I will step back. Sorry, mayor, I will step back.
My, my motion was to approve the ordinance as originally, the agenda, the the motion as a, ordinance as originally written, that has the permanent establishment of what's been done for the last two years.
All right, so it sounds like we have two conflicting motions on the floor. We do have a motion and a second for the amended version that is.
Assuming there, assuming there were a second for the first motion, which I don't think I heard one, then the the second one would be taken first, because there's a motion and a second. So I think it'd be appropriate procedurally to take Councilmember DeHart's motion first, since it was an amended.
Can there be further discussion? I have questions that I haven't asked yet before we vote on the motion.
Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a few questions about enforcement and also the regulatory scheme that we have. So, one, can we talk a little bit about enforcement and what we're seeing, either if city staff has those answers of what you've heard from businesses, or if council members have from talking to businesses? I know I am a frequent user of these services. I actually remember in Palm Springs when I had been in the Bay Area and they were available, and then I moved here and I had to wait many years for them to come, so grateful that they are here. But I have noticed a lot of issues with, I don't see the disclosures. I was just looking the other day, and I saw that, I won't name the company, but items were a few dollars more on the app than the website of the restaurant, so that clearly violates the ordinance. I think my order would have been $10 more out of $30 or $40, just because the prices were inflated, not even considering the fees and all of that. So could you just talk a little bit about what we might do to enforce this ordinance, however council decides to continue it? You know, have we notified, I'm trying to remember back in 2020 and 2021 when we did this, I think we did do outreach to restaurants and send letters to them and notify them about the framework, but would staff have suggestions about ways we might enforce this ordinance?
I I believe you're correct that we did do outreach. I believe we also reached out to some of the online platforms that we had contact information for to make them aware of of the ordinance.
Thank you. So we could do something like that again, like reissue a letter to restaurants or other, actually, it's broader now, because you can order all types of things on these services and platforms, so we could notify business owners, that sort of thing.
Correct, although although this ordinance is really limited to food establishments, delivery of food, so it wouldn't apply to a delivery service that doesn't provide food. If if they only provided books, for example, this would not apply to them.
Right, it's interesting now, because it's really expanded just in the last two years. I have a toddler and I had a baby, so I'm very used to these services, because I often could not leave the house to get food. And so now you can order convenience items. I'm trying to think of how, what other local businesses we would see in under this ordinance. Many of them are chains, but they could be locally owned, like they deliver 7-Eleven and other things like that, convenience. They offer liquor, like liquor stores, local liquor stores are selling on these platforms as well, so.
This ordinance would apply to that, then, food and drink.
Food and drinks.
Yes.
So it would just exclude convenience, which mostly it's CVS and those sorts of larger chains. I have a question about business licensure. So are, how is the, how are the businesses regulated who are doing business in in Palm Springs? Do they have business licenses, or do, how do we know who's operating in Palm Springs? And what's that model look like? Are we receiving revenue on the sales, et cetera?
I think from a, from a legal perspective, we would be entirely entitled to require them to obtain a business license. We would probably have to apportion the business license tax that we collect from these types of businesses, because they operate in multiple jurisdictions. I don't know off the top of my head whether these businesses actually do have business licenses, but we can ask ask staff to find that out.
We've seen that issue on a number of different tech models, where it was like, do we require it of every delivery driver, or is it the larger companies? How do we know who's operating, those sorts of things? Daryl Terrell of Moreno Valley drove all the way here to give this public comment. So he asked, can the council require companies to share customer order data with restaurants, fulfilling food orders, prohibit them from listing restaurants on their platform without the restaurant's permission? I think that might already be required by state law. Require them to list a restaurant's brick and mortar telephone number on their platform? Could the council prohibit them from charging restaurants for telephone orders? So I just want to make sure that we heard that public comment, appreciate his insight here, and if staff has any response. Those things aren't currently in our ordinance.
Right, I I think with the exception of the the making available the the consumers' orders, I think all of those are, at least, would probably be legally defensible under the city's police power. I think the listing of customers' orders might implicate some privacy concerns that courts might be skeptical of. We could certainly look into those if the council wishes us to.
Thank you. Those are the only questions I have.
Great. So at this time, we do have a motion and a second on the floor to support the amended version of this ordinance that was provided in our supplemental information. So at this time, we'll take a vote on that motion, and depending on the outcome of that motion, we can hear an additional motion. Councilmember Hostage?
All right, I'd like to discuss things before we just vote. If I can ask one more question about legal liability. So in the staff report, thank you, Madam Mayor, it talks about San Francisco having a similar ordinance to our permanent one, that is the motion on the table. So can you just explain a little bit about the legal liability and the risk if we were to continue with the existing ordinance? And if there is risk, what might come, what might come next in terms of if the council approves that, what might happen, and what might be the outcome or the negotiations that would occur?
Sure, so as I indicated in the supplemental staff report, San Francisco was sued by DoorDash and Grubhub based on their ordinance that mirrors our our existing COVID ordinance. And the city in that case filed what's called a motion to dismiss, which basically asks the court to decide whether the case should proceed to trial. The city was successful in part, but not successful in other parts, and the court in that case was going to allow the case to proceed to a trial on two claims. One would be a due process claim under the, under the Constitution, and then the other would be a takings claim also under the Constitution. The court didn't say that that DoorDash would necessarily win on those two causes of action, but they said that the the companies at least established a viable claim that could proceed to trial, and there would be, there would have to be a trial on the facts in terms of the reasonableness of the regulation in order to resolve that. And so I would say that, oh, I would also point out that DoorDash, and I believe Grubhub also have sued the city of New York, and that lawsuit is still pending. So the two companies have indicated a propensity to to file lawsuits over these types of ordinances. So it would be fair to expect, if the council adopted an ordinance similar to, identical to what we currently have in place under our COVID ordinance, it's quite likely that that Grubhub or DoorDash or both of them might sue. And while the city might ultimately prevail in that lawsuit, it would obviously prove costly in terms of having to defend it. So unfortunately, I I think they've they've indicated a propensity to to file a lawsuit.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. So if we can vote on this motion to approve the amended version, if the motion fails, then we can have an alternate motion provided. Motion fails. All right, do we have an alternate motion from council? Mayor Protem, can you put your mic on?
My motion, which I said, I don't know how, is to do the permanent limitations that were established.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Sorry, I'm sitting here, and I was delaying a little bit because I'm undecided, and so I voted no, just so we can have more of the discussion. Just to say, I did meet with DoorDash, who had contacted the city and proposed this amended version, which the city attorney and city staff presented. I do think that's a reasonable compromise, and I am concerned about liability. But I also talked to local restaurants, who shared that they felt that the 15% limit was the very bare minimum, but they were still being buried in the apps and not being found and really not having access to the full services. And so while I hear the concerns about what is our role in in regulating the relationship between these two businesses, it's hard to insert ourselves there, but also our restaurants are still struggling with this, and they do feel that they are paying more than often that they're making in terms of profit. And so I think that there might be more work to do on this ordinance and with these companies. You know, I'm interested in what our role is as a city, when these are international companies that are doing business with tens of thousands of other cities, and, you know, how much power we have against those companies to really regulate our own system. So those are all the thoughts that are going through my mind as I'm sitting here. I'm not used to being the swing vote. So I I'm open to continuing with the current ordinance, and I think I would support that motion. But and I think we'd have more conversations with the companies about what other protections. I don't think we did as much due diligence with talk, bringing everyone together at the table with this that we would normally do, and I was just scrambling to like reach out to restaurants and and business owners on my own today. But normally, I think we'd have a roundtable or something like that, or at least a process, public process to be heard if this is still an issue, because we also heard other business owners, our, and restaurants are supportive of the compromise in the amended ordinance. So I just, it's hard without that public process of knowing where the majority of restaurants are and really what they need from us today, but the ones I did reach out to said that they needed more support and protection on this issue.
Mayor Protem?
I will just say, this is why we need an economic business liaison, who could have reached out to lots of businesses and not just the few out there. But I do think probably, you know, more time is, is there an option to have, ensure that our local restaurants get the same deal as national chains?
We've reached out to, we've reached out to the representative from DoorDash, and I didn't get a really strong response in terms of their willingness to to provide that equal platform, no. And I would say, if if the council is interested in moving forward with one version or or the other, and then having more dialogue with the companies, you could always introduce the ordinance, you know, ordinances require two readings, so you could introduce the ordinance tonight in one way or another, and then direct staff to to have those conversations with the stakeholders.
That would make sense. I would just mention that we need really extensive restaurant reach to do this. We don't, I guess, maybe we can do that through our database of businesses, business licenses, but if we could get that information, that would be great. I think the problem we've we've had with this is that, you know, I probably talked to 20 restaurants, but I think we have hundreds in the city, and so it would be interesting to see what they all feel. But and then if there was a way to do a most favored nations for the national chains, then it might make everything a little bit easier. I think the problem now is that these big chains are obviously, they're probably at below 15%. And I don't want to stop the free market, but I want to make sure that our local businesses are represented well.
What would be the timeline for bringing the second reading of the ordinance back?
Mayor, councilmembers, obviously, we're going to have to sit down and talk to staff and see what kind of capability they have to reach out. If you're really hoping to get a lot of input from a lot of restaurants, see what our capability is. We're trying to do a lot of work on the budget right now, and so I don't want to overpromise, but might, might, you know, maybe in a couple meetings.
So we're not, we don't have to follow any strict timeline in bringing back the second reading of the ordinance?
No, I don't, I I don't believe the second reading has to come back in, right, immediately.
Correct, there's a, it can't come back sooner than five days.
Your mic, your mic.
It can't come back sooner than five days, but it could be a month, two months, a year.
Great. So what we're hearing is that we could pass and, or we could put a motion on the floor to pass the original ordinance or maintain the original ordinance, and then would not become effective until that second reading. And during that interim period, we could engage with stakeholders, the delivery services and the restaurant owners, the drivers, the consumers, et cetera. There is a motion on the floor by Mayor Protem. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion to pursue that process that was just described by the mayor.
And just to clarify, this was the original ordinance that was provided in the original staff report?
Yes, in the original staff report.
We'll do a roll call, vote for that one.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
No.
Councilmember Middleton? Mayor, Mayor Garner?
Yes.
Motion passes three, two.
Great, thank you all very much. At this time.
Let me, let me read it.
Go ahead.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, adding chapter 5.89 to the Palm Springs Municipal Code regarding limitations on third-party food delivery fees.
Thank you. At the next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest that are not on our council agenda this evening. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take action on any items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. I believe Douglas Young has left. Daryl Terrell, followed by Michael Joseph Pitkin.
Good evening, my name is Daryl Terrell. The pandemic has created new fiscal challenges that calls for a new way, a new approach to budgeting in a way that delivers the results the residents want at the price they're willing to pay. That's why I would like for you, Madam Mayor and the city council, to consider in your next budget cycle implementing priority-based budgeting. Government Finance Officers Association and the International City Encounter Management Association has adopted this approach as a recommended best practice. It's a framework that would enable you to effectively match the available resources with the community's priorities. The philosophy behind this is that city resources should be allocated according to how effectively a city program or city services achieves the goals and objectives that are the greatest value to the community. In a priority-driven approach, the city would identify its most important strategic priorities, and then through a collaborative, evidence-based process, rank city programs or city services according to how well they align with the priorities. The city then would allocate funding in accordance to those rankings. It would be a major shift from the current line item budgeting approach. Simply would turn the the city's budget process upside down by crediting a city budget, not by looking at last year's budget at baseline, but evaluating and score services and programs based on desired outcomes and align budgets with the community priorities by reviewing city-level. city level, service levels and efficiencies to allocate and optimize resources. And you know, the one most important benefit of this is that they will help you make data-driven decisions to allow budget resources.
Michael Joseph Pitkin?
Mobbing is where two or more people conspire together to bully another person. The hazat shemrah, negative street gossip in Palm Springs, Coachella Valley, Riverside County, is that gay, HIV-positive individuals in prison are targeted, canceled culture, denied contact with their family members, poisoned, prematurely killed, and complete strangers take out life insurance policies on them, almost like Michael Jackson and Prince. I have no proof of this. Even if this is BS, why would this be a topic of discussion here unless it is part of a reasonableness test program? What I do have is my own experience here in Palm Springs. I have walked over 4,000 miles in order to go to the library and document a response to the Palm Springs brand. I feel the brand can do better for those who are new to town and who are not retired millionaire homeowners. An inclusive diversity brand accepts people for who each is, not who you want them to be. Art imitates life. Myself, I am a combination of German, Jew, French, English, and Russian. Like in the movie Greenland, my grandfather on my mother's side was trained as a tailor from St. Petersburg, Russia. He was part of a program of team of tradesmen to establish a town in the Oregon Territory. My aunts Mary and Anna did not survive the Russian Revolution. On my father's side, I am a Kaiser and a descendant of Marie Antoinette. Is this a tell of two cities? Like in the movie Black Klansman, people of color believe I am a Nazi of Operation Paperclip. Hazat shemrah of my being of three royal families, one would think the Palm Springs blackmailers would be asking for hundreds of millions for my ransom, but it's more like the 99 cent store discounted dollar store royal. The indigenous people of color in Oregon receive 50% of my grandmother's inheritance. My mother's inheritance in Idaho is another reason I am now currently being targeted. And you all just reminded me, I am a health conscientious objector.
That is the end of our public comment. The next item on our agenda is City Council and City Manager requests an upcoming agenda development. City Manager, do you have an update for us?
Yes, certainly, Madam Mayor, members of council, just taking a quick look at the tentative upcoming agenda. You'll see, you'll notice, first of all, we have a lot of, over the next couple of months, a lot of budget-related items. I just want to, for the, for the public's awareness, May 8th, the week from Monday, will be our study session on the budget when we, we'll present general fund, capital, and airport ideas and budget development to you at that time. Obviously, no discussions. It's primarily for the staff to get, to engage in discussion with the council and get guidance from you. Following that, you're just looking down a little further, you'll see on, on May 25th, another budget-related item will be having a joint session with the City Council and the Measure J Commission, where we'll be able to talk a little further about the Measure J priorities and, and what they've been developing, and have the council discuss, discuss that in conjunction with the commission. Again, more, more discussion and guidance to the staff. And then, of course, we'll have two more budget discussions at both council meetings in the month of June, both at June 5th and June 29th. And ideally, or statutorily, we need to approve the budget by June 29th. Going back to the regular meeting up above on May 11th, you'll also note, we have, we've been talking about the Thompson Hotel a bit. And I think they're going to be here to maybe talk about that.
Did they, can't, they're not going to be doing that because they'll, they'll be having a sort of limited open house instead?
Oh, okay. We'll have, we will have a update, planned development district for the Dream Hotel, an update for council, we'll talk about that. And we want to come back and also share with, report out on the council visioning session that we had on April 3rd, where we talked about a lot of the priorities. Looking a little further, you'll see May 25th, our Palm Springs disposal service will have our delinquent waste disposal charges presented. We're going to come back with some sidewalk vending ordinance discussion. And then in June, the two budget discussions. I do want to mention just a couple other topics. On Monday, our new fire chief, Paul Alvarado, will be beginning work. So at our first available council meeting, we'll be getting him here in front of you to meet him, and certainly making him available to also meet with you individually. And I'm sure he's going to be out in the community, meeting lots of groups. So you can look forward to that. And I know there, this weekend, there's a big preservation matters meeting, but maybe one of the council members at the dais wants to talk about that. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Do we have councilmembers who have, want to add to the agenda discussion? Councilmember DeHart?
I heard in comments earlier tonight, a desire to, to look into the Washingtonian skirts. And I, I think that's an important, it's something that's very important for us to, to make sure we're focusing on. So I don't know how we formalize that request. What's the best way to formalize it?
Yes, certainly, we can, we can bring it back as a council item if three of you want to do that. But we can also do some individual research and share it in a memorandum to the council members. And then from there, you can decide what direction you want to go with it.
I would certainly like to have it come back to us, but I would like it to come back with an arborist giving us a professional explanation and professional recommendations.
Thank you. So-
I understand, is that as a council, as an agenda item or as a memo?
Councilmember Middleton?
It can come back as a- It'd happen as soon as reasonable, but my recommendation would be, let's engage a, a professional to study and give us recommendations and have it come back in that fashion.
Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, can you clarify the request?
Request would be to ask a professional arborist to study the skirts of the Washingtonian palm tree that is so prevalent in Palm Springs, and come back to us with recommendations as to where, if any place, it would be appropriate to remove those skirts from, for a public safety standpoint, or to improve the health of the tree.
Just a clarifying question, is this something that needs to come to council? Or is this something that Public Works and Parks and, or, yeah, Public Works could look into?
Well, I will mention, the city, we already have under contract West Coast Arborists. They do all of the, a lot of the tree trimming and maintenance for us throughout the city. Obviously, they're going to have, they're going to have some industry knowledge about this topic, and it would certainly be appropriate for us to consult with them as, as our representative.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Can I suggest, maybe they do a report that we look at? If it's on the agenda, we're making a decision about whether we try, start trimming them. So maybe we can see, do a, do a report first? Because I mean, there's another, there's, just to be clear, there's other issues too because the tribe, it has a, it has a historical meaning for them. So that's why it becomes more complicated. But it would be nice to hear the arborist, and at least if we get a report, and then we could have an agenda item as to whether we're going to make a decision on policy to trim the trees in certain areas.
We can, we can certainly share, gather some information, share that with council members, and then you can make some decisions about what you'd like to do.
Great, thank you very much. Do we have other requests for agenda items at this time? Councilmember DeHart?
It may not, may be another item for staff to look at, but the reader board that went up at the entry into town now, it isn't a very welcoming sign. And I wonder, who, who on staff is able to control the look of that message that's on that sign?
My understanding is the sign was installed by Caltrans, and it's, and it's their-
Part of the CV sync, he was, he, it's in his presentation, which I just didn't realize till now. But, but the question is, I think, the design of both the message and the actual structure is quite obtrusive.
Our brand, it's, it's not representing the city as a point of entry well. So I think we, we need to be able to have some sense of input on the look that goes up there. Not the message necessarily, but you know, is, is-
Conversation with Tom Kirk.
It just doesn't, it's not a nice welcome.
Potentially, we could reach out to Caltrans and, and kind of discuss some of the concerns with them and see-
Can I suggest we talk to Tom Kirk? Because he, it was in his presentation about it, and see where there might be an option about doing something? Because I don't know if it went to C-Veg or C-Sync, C-Sync first. I'm not sure where it came from, but it did just appear.
All right. Well, great. Sounds good if we can look at that. Are there any other comments, Mayor Protem?
One more on the agenda is, I'm just going to raise the TOT percentage to affordable housing. It's not on any agenda now. How come it's disappeared?
No, we haven't forgotten it, and we will bring it back to council sometime within these, this month or next month.
Thank you very much.
We will have it for you.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other comments from council? Okay. Seeing none, I will pass it over to Councilmember Middleton for, to close us out.
All right, thank you. Earlier this month, we lost another of the incredible legends in our community when Gail Christian passed away at age 83. Gail and her wife, Lucy D. Bart, D. Bart Delabon, were residents of Palm Springs for nearly 20 years. They were co-founders of the Palm Springs Women's Jazz Festival. For all of us who knew them, they were simply Lucy and Gail, and you never talked about one without mentioning the other. She was an incredible individual, grew up in Los Angeles, and as reported in much of the media, had many issues and challenges as she was growing up. And at one point, was incarcerated in the California State Women's Prison for armed robbery. She went on to become one of the groundbreaking journalists in America, first beginning early in her career, reporting on the Patty Hearst murder trial, then moving on to many, many other assignments at NBC and at PBS. And I want to quote a couple of things from her that were reported in the New York Times obituary for Gail. And it's a quote from her, "I always wanted to be the black reporter, as in covering black stories." She said in an interview with Chicago Tribune in 1986, "I felt that was the reason I was there. I didn't resent it in the least. I felt then as I feel now, that it is very dangerous for a group of people to live in a society where they are not allowed to interpret themselves." Later in her life, Gail went on to become the National News Director for the Public Broadcasting System. And she said of that, "I always wanted to be the one in the room who got to decide what was done." For those of us who knew her in Palm Springs, she was just simply Lucy and Gail, two beautiful women celebrating their lives together with numerous friends. And whether you knew of what she had accomplished in her career or not, you only had to spend a moment with her to understand the incomparable dignity that characterized Gail Christian. We will adjourn in her honor.
This meeting is now adjourned. Our next regular city council meeting is Thursday, May 11th at 5:30 PM. And our next special council meeting will be Monday, May 8th. Thank you.